2025. I'd like to start this meeting with a land acknowledgement. The city respectfully acknowledges the Beaver Creek-Denny and Mati people as the original caretakers of these lands and surrounding areas. We are grateful to live, learn, work, and play on Treaty VIII territory within Turtle Island and acknowledge these lands have been home to diverse and sovereign First Nations and Inuit nations since time immemorial. I would now look for an adoption of today's agenda. As amended, my apologies. I'll recognize Council Bressy.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I move that council adopt the agenda as amended.
Thanks for that motion. I see no one else in the queue. I'll call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. So quite a few items of business today. We will start with under reports, item 4.1, the Grand Prairie Airport Economic Framework, and I will look to Mr. Tarrant for introductions. Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. With us today, we have Bob Nicolai, who will be introducing the consultant, who will speak to the report in any greater detail.
Perfect. Welcome, Mr. Nicolai. Your mic is on. Just maybe pull it a smidge closer to you so we're sure that everybody can hear you clearly, and I'll turn it over to you. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton, members of council and members of administration. I can't tell you what a pleasure it is to be here, and I think you probably hear that a lot, but given our history together and some of the things that we've been through, I hope that you'll believe that that is quite sincere and quite genuine. I'm especially excited to be here today because of the subject that we're about to address. It began about a year ago. I've got a couple of notes that I'll follow just to make sure I don't wander and to make sure I hit the salient points, but it's a time, I think, for a bit of celebration on the conclusion of a major step in the process toward optimizing the economic value of the Grand Prairie Airport to this community. It did begin about a year ago. May of 2024, we received direction to commence work on what was described at that time as a vision for optimizing Grand Prairie Airport's economic opportunities. So a bit of a mouthful, but it was really if a municipality owns an airport as an asset, how does it optimize the value of that asset to the community and ensure that it stays at an optimal level for as long as possible? And what prompted the initiative in the first place, I think, was that it became evident through a series of things that were occurring on land around the airport, the development of Hughes Lake, and the economic activity in the community generally, that we needed some clear parameters for development of land around the airport, on the airport, and how the airport operated itself, and we needed clear parameters for land use planning that could be used in the administration of all of our land use developments. That ultimately led City Council, that direction led City Council to approve a budget allocation for the economic corridors project or under the economic corridors project, which encompassed the engagement of a firm called MXD Development Strategists, and they were engaged to help us develop what we referred to as an owner's perspective on the economic value of the municipal airport to the community. So the city of Grand Prairie's perspective on what the economic value of a airport is to the community. That work began and extensive work has ensued, but just under a year ago, it was July of 2024, we also met with the Grand Prairie Airport Commission, and that was part of the process, a very important part of the process, to share with them the details of this initiative and request their participation, the commission's participation directly and through stakeholder consultation that would ensue throughout the community, but particularly the participation of the Airport Commission as we started to address this issue. The work has continued, and to this point, we, MXD and management, has conducted a multitude of meetings with stakeholders throughout the community, and they were very insightful. They were useful in making sure that we had the perspective of major industry segments within the community on what the airport needs are for their industries. We conducted a series of workshops and planning sessions with city management and city council. MXD concluded in-depth research and analysis of relevant economic and community factors. MXD will be introduced a little later, but the absolute experts in this field on the value of airports to communities such as ours. And they've also prepared a comprehensive report on their findings, their conclusions, and their recommendations. Chris and I believe Penny will be joining us a little bit later, and I'll introduce them more formally, and they'll take you through their findings. They'll take you through a presentation that highlights the key findings in their work. And I'll just foreshadow this a little bit, just for the sake of ensuring that people are attuned to what you'll hear when the report is delivered. We really tried, or MXD really tried to address three major issues relating to the airport. The first one, a bit obvious perhaps, but it was how should land development occur on and off the city's airport properties? What are the city's intentions? What would we really, as a municipality, what does the city really want to see happen in those areas? And how can we properly prepare those lands consistent with those intentions to enable and complement the requisite municipal planning processes that would ensue? So this was not the planning process per se. This is preparing us for the steps that would be necessary in a municipal planning process. So that was the first question that, or first element that they were going to try to address, and they've done so. Second one was, how should the city airport be operated optimally to serve this community? The first axiom or the first fundamental that was dealt with when we started to research this is that there's an absolute requirement that the city of Grand Prairie own its own airport. That was not going to be part of any consideration. There should be any kind of a divestiture discussion on ownership of the airport. So given that the city of Grand Prairie will always own the airport, the question is, what's the optimal way for it to operate? And they explored a variety of things that you'll hear about in their presentation, but one of the fundamentals that was explored was, should we do that on our own, the way we have done it to this, to this point since our ownership commenced? Or should we be doing that in partnership with some other body that could offer an additional level of expertise into the operations of the airport? So that was also encompassed within the work by MXD. And thirdly, how can we leverage the airport development and connectivity to accelerate thoughtful economic growth in Grand Prairie? And it's really the thoughtful economic growth that necessitates this kind of work, this kind of analysis that takes some time. It's taken us a year from the time we began to get to the point where you'll see the recommendations today. So with that foreshadowing, I'll just introduce MXD's Chris Laterno. Chris is the president and CEO of MXD Management, our Development Strategists. Penny Gaze, I think, is able to join us as well. She was having some logistical challenges, so may or may not be on the line, but Penny was the, or is the development planner that worked extensively on the project as well. And they'll take you through the outcome of their work with the community stakeholders, with the commission, and with council, and the aviation community broadly, in a presentation that will be led by Chris Laterno. Chris, can I turn it over to you, please?
Absolutely. Can you hear me?
You can, thank you.
Oh, fantastic. And you have the slides on the screen?
We do. We're good to go.
Fantastic. Well, thank you, Bob, for that wonderful introduction and overview of the process. It's a wonderful pleasure to share with you today our findings of our Grand Prairie Airport Area Economic Framework. Good afternoon, Mayor, council, and staff. As mentioned, I'm Chris Laterno, President and CEO at MXD Development Strategists. As mentioned, I'm Chris Laterno, President and CEO at MXD Development Strategists, based in Vancouver, but working throughout Canada, the US, and even globally, assisting public jurisdictions and airports on how to optimize their connectivity as well as their properties. We've been doing this since, particularly myself, since 1995, when Vancouver International Airport became an airport authority. And one of the key aspects of that was to understand how to leverage the connectivity as well as strategically and sustainably plan the airport's properties. Over the years, we've worked on airports from Yellowknifes and more modest-sized airports right up to the bigger ones throughout North America, like Denver and Dallas, Charlotte, and Orlando. The role that we play is not to plan the airside system of runways and terminals, but rather it's to look at the economic development that leverages off of that airside infrastructure and investment, and then very much zooms in on the properties, as Bob said, on the airport and directly adjacent. In my not-for-profit capabilities, professional abilities, I also chair the Smart Airports and Regions Conference and Exhibitions, of which the next one is happening, in fact, in just three weeks, in Atlanta, from July 15th to 17th. And I also help put together and chair the Urban Land Institute's Airport Development Product Council that addresses the unique issues relating to property and economic development at and around airports. So as Bob mentioned today, we're going to share with you the results of our Grand Prairie Airport Area Economic Framework. And the bottom-line objective was to leverage the airport's connectivity in order to accelerate economic growth. We have structured our presentation to reflect the way our report was put together, starting with the overview. We used also a market and economic-based approach in order to understand the opportunities, and then came up with what we call the economic vision for the framework, which then, in the second item, will show you how that manifests and translates into the types of land use and mobility that could happen on the city's airport properties, as well as to inform the areas around the airport. We'll look at specific typologies of use, as well as phasing and prioritization, how this could roll out over time. And then a separate piece of this was to understand, how does the airport operating model work today for the airport operations? But what are other potential models and organizations that are involved in operating airports throughout Canada, North America, and even internationally, to address not just airport operations, but optimization of economic development as well as airport properties? So the first piece of this, the project overview, they're really, in the previous stage, which Bob mentioned, was in 2024, we spent quite a bit of time understanding the economic DNA of the region, as well as the airport's operations, to see what the correlation might be, to identify new opportunities. This also involves looking at case study benchmarks of other similar-sized airports throughout North America, to see what innovative ideas they had, and as Bob mentioned, meeting with a whole variety of targeted local and business stakeholders to see what they were suggesting could be opportunities. The current stage that occurred in 2025 involved, as I mentioned, drilling down on the airport area framework concept, as well as exploring opportunities for alternative development And as Bob already articulated, you know, this was to understand very specifically how the city can optimize its airport properties, but also to protect and preserve the future growth of the airport, what would be compatible and optimal uses strategically planned surrounding the airport. And then, as I mentioned, what investment, development, and operating models could be incorporated, and who might be preferred partners that then the city could work with and explore these potential models. The economic vision that we evolved in 2024, it actually looked quite broadly, not just within the city, but beyond, to really understand what the economic anchors are already in the mobility systems, knowing that airports are not just about for people and products arriving in and out by air, but how they interface with the ground transportation and mobility systems, such as Canamix Corridor, Highway 43, and even the rail system. We documented what we saw as the economic clusters operating today, as well as zooming in to the airport area between the airport and the city center. And you know what was quite fascinating, excuse me, was that along Highway 43 and 100th Avenue, there is a very strong existing industrial and then commercial corridor. But additionally, we saw the airport with its aviation aerospace activities at the west end, and then the regional hospital and the Northwest Polytechnic as an anchor to the east side of what we could see as a potential new Grand Prairie Economic Corridor hub connecting those two.
Chris, sorry, I just wanted to introduce you for a second. We actually don't have control of your slides, so if you wanted to advance them, that would be great.
Oh, I have been advancing them. Are they not advancing?
No, no, not on our end.
Okay.
I wonder if you have to be in slideshow mode.
If you go into slideshow mode, then they probably automatically advance back to, yeah.
Yeah, I was in slideshow mode, but we'll try that again. Tried a different way. How about now, do you see?
Yeah, that's perfect. Thank you. So if you just wanted to advance.
Did it transition now?
Yes, we are now. Thank you.
Okay. So yeah, the overview, I mentioned this, the three components of the economic vision, the framework concept, and then exploring the operating models. And then, you know, moving forward, which of these models could be pursued to collaborate and explore with potential partners? And then I was just commenting on the economic vision of 2024. I apologize, it was changing on my screen, but not on yours. I'm glad it is now. So as I mentioned, we looked at the economic anchors, not just in the city, but beyond. We looked at what we like to always call corridors of economic opportunity, knowing that already there are some very strong ones, like Highway 43 and 100th Avenue, with its existing industrial, commercial, retail, and hotel functions coming into the city center. But one of the most profound findings, as you can see on the screen, was the concentration and cluster of aviation and aerospace at the airport, and then the recently evolved healthcare innovation education cluster with the regional hospital and the Northwest Polytechnic. And that in between these two appears to be an opportunity for a new economic corridor that we call Grand Prairie Economic Hub. And if we zoom into that, you know, this then became our study area to look more closely, knowing that within this area, the city already owns a considerable chunk of lands through the airport, also through the Northwest Polytechnic, they own provincial lands, and then, of course, there are private lands here as well. We looked at all of the existing plans, area structure plans, the land use bylaws, the MDP. We also looked at the work that the airport commission and the city had done by AVNG and InterVistas for the Airport Master Plan, recently published in 2023. And we looked at various other considerations that are unique to airport areas in order to start evolving our directions. A key piece of what we did also was not only the economic profiling, but we did a market analysis of the different asset classes, including industrial, office, hotel, and retail, in order to give some baseline idea, based on historic absorption and transactions, but also looking forward. And in the moderate scenario, you can see there that it looked like about 81 acres of new industrial land over the 20-year horizon, not a whole lot of office, 11 acres, retail because it's so well-served today, perhaps another 13 acres, and then up to 180 rooms of select service, hotel rooms. But we would like to think that this is a baseline, and that with the connectivity of the airport and the ground mobility system being optimized in a very targeted way, that it might hopefully accelerate some of these market forecasts. So then, the second piece, looking at the framework, how we applied all of our research from 2024. And if we zoom into that study area I showed a moment ago, we've started to frame it up into different areas. Now, the numbers you see on the right do not include the airport's runway and airside systems, but they include the five districts that we've identified. These include the land side east with about 615 acres, the airside central around the terminal area with about 160 acres, airside north, 170 acres, and then the airside south, which has sort of a hockey stick upside-down shape along the edge of the runway, 205 acres, and then on private properties just outside of the city's boundary, 255 acres at land side west. Notice that we're differentiating airside properties that are next to the runway from land side properties that are not connected with the runway system, but rely on the ground mobility system. In total, the study area is about 1,400 acres, and of this, on the city's on-airport properties, just over half of that, at 765 acres. We then explored a number of options. We created three different options to evolve in a mobility system and then allocate very generally in this concept where compatible and optimized uses might locate. The differences between these three options lie predominantly in this idea that this is predicated on to connect a new road and a new east-west corridor that would connect the hospital with the airport. And you can see in some of these concepts, it follows a southern edge there, and I'll try to point to that here along this, if you can see. In other options, it flares it up like this, and in yet in other options, it brings it down. Now, some of this had to do with responding to the Airport Master Plan prepared by AVNG and InterVistas, which most closely resembled this. It had a road coming up, and it had aviation uses north of it and other land side uses to the south. We thought, though, that to optimize the amount of short-term aviation space, which is always in high demand, perhaps we should bring the road down, as you see in option one here, and then have it follow essentially the edge of the two different sections here. And then option three was sort of a hybrid, to have one go up and one come down to ride back towards the hospital. So that was the difference between the options. The preferred option that we selected followed pretty much the option one, but we also realized and took into account, here's the red dotted line, are the city's owned properties at and around the airport. The provincial properties are over at this end, but we know there are also private properties in the middle. So we ended up with a bit of a hybrid. The new, what we call east-west connector road, or a corridor of opportunity, would connect from the airport along the section line, but then flare up through the city's properties to respect some of the existing buildings and private properties, and then flare back to connect to 109th in the proximity of the hospital. At the other end, we looked off of Highway 43 and 100th Avenue, the possibility of bringing a road here, providing, well, there already is a road, but to enhance that, knowing full well that the city owns in the, what I like to call the magic triangle, east of that road, and then these are private properties here, west of that road. Potentially, in the future, there could also be some other form of road connecting through here that might differentiate airside access properties from land side properties. We then looked at compatible use, recognizing what we heard from stakeholders, what we learned from the market analysis and the economic profiling, and came up with this, whoops, I'm sorry, it jumped forward, with this general land use allocation as a concept. Again, looking at how we can take advantage of the existing terminal and aviation area to expand that and embrace new concepts in aviation that I'll speak to in just a moment. Along the east-west corridor, we saw opportunities on the city's airport property for aerospace, advanced manufacturing, as well as aligning anywhere on the edges of the runway with future aviation-type uses. But as we go towards the hospital and the Northwest Polytechnic for multi-tenant flex tech spaces that could incubate smaller companies that feed into either aviation or any of the major economic sectors in the area, like forestry, energy, and agriculture. As we get out to 116th, we saw the opportunity for a commercial node, and this is also identified in the area structure planning for the area to serve the airport community, but also this part of the city over time. And then the east-west connector would make its way over to the hospital. If we come in from the other end, think of it as a barbell, airport at one end, the hospital at the other, it suggests an opportunity, and we have heard of interest for healthcare and biolife science-type companies and organizations that might be involved in diagnostics, in urban wellness villages, in outpatient clinics, in what they call medical office retail space that would complement and work hand-in-hand with the hospital. That also sets up a different kind of flex tech, a hybrid of sort of light industrial and office-type use, something we don't see a lot of just as yet in Grand Prairie, but this would be an ideal place for it to manifest. And then transitioning towards Bear Creek, per the area structure plans and the need for housing over time, perhaps medium and higher-density residential together in mixed use, close to the hospital, whether that's for employees at the hospital, employees at the airport, campus, or just generally in the community, and then transitioning as we work our way towards Bear Creek. If we switch gears to the other end, in the west, airside west and land side west, we always want to take advantage of opportunities on the runway for potential airside and aviation uses, and I'll show you what those are in just a moment. In this magic triangle of city airport-owned property, it made a lot of sense to us with the Canamix Corridor, Highway 43 and 100th, to have a logistics node that would feed off of airside and land side activities, as well as taking advantage of the 100th Avenue frontage for future commercial use, potentially including that hotel demand opportunity that we mentioned. We also came up with a nomenclating system in this concept, which we use as we look at prioritization phasing, as well as the more specific concept of land use. Now, if we dial in and zoom into the different areas, airside central, as you can see here, being the core and the heart of the airport, today, the terminal is here, there are a variety of airside users here, and there are airside lots and parking and grassed areas here that perhaps could be further used and intensified. But really, we thought this was the opportunity for future use in what we call airside central two. We know that certain aviation and flight training already occurs at the airport, but this is a growth area, and you match that together with the future of aviation and things like drones, electrification of aircraft, and how these are being used, UAVs, unmanned air vehicles, not just thinking about moving people, but moving products, whether that's healthcare, perishables, even parts and components for heavy equipment that would be serving the various sectors of Alberta's north. There is a huge requirement for training, including military, of how to operate these, as well as the manufacturing, R&amp;D testing, and scale-up, all of which could be things that could be happening in AC2. More traditionally, the maintenance repair overhaul, or MRO, is the acronym. More traditionally, the maintenance repair overhaul, or MRO is the acronym for all variety and types and sizes of aircraft, could occur here as well, including things that might not fit into the bigger gateway airports like Edmonton, Calgary, and Vancouver. For instance, painting and customization of aircraft. The other thing that goes hand-in-hand with that are the charter or the general aviation and private, what are called fixed-based operator terminals, or FBOs, that fuel and service itinerant aircraft as well as locally based aircraft. And then, very interesting, having the hospital at one end of this proposed east-west connector road would be air ambulance and medical and health as it relates to moving people, but also bi-life moving products. And Starz Air Ambulance is a great example. They already have a facility, for instance, at Edmonton International Airport that is always busy, particularly serving the northern oil and gas industry. And then as we move in the land side piece just out of this, it could transition to this flex tech use, some of which may make its way even into the AC two. If we look at the two airside north area, which we see as more of a future expansion and growth area, and then airside south one, also an airside area in the magic triangle off of the Hundredth Avenue. This, in conjunction with LW two, is where we think logistics and distribution, which is a very strong category, could occur. We also see opportunities for the kind of airside/land side logistics that would flow between these, and you see that in this image here. In fact, this is at Calgary, sorry, at Edmonton International Airport, where they have the cargo jet and DHL facility cross-dock with air on one side, trucks on the other. And then, very, there's a lot of growth happening in the idea of sustainable renewable green energy and how airports and cities are becoming involved in the microutility of everything from solar and photovoltaic farms to generate electricity, to sustainable aviation fuels, to microgrids converting all of that, even using hydrogen, knowing that we're not far from the hydrogen hub that's evolving in Edmonton. An example, we just worked with this Pittsburgh International Airport that recently has just put in a twenty-four acre sustainable fueling blending and refinery. They also have twenty-five acres of photovoltaic cells, and this is attracted attention of data centers to take locations there because of the big electrical needs that they require. It also is preparing that airport to be ready for the electrification, not only of the airport's ground handling equipment and vehicles, but also of all forms of aircraft, including advanced air mobility and drones, as I touched on earlier. And then, as we move to the east, the big area, land side east, over six hundred acres, a good portion of that you see in LE one, two, and three, sorry, and four, is the city-owned airport properties, where we believe advanced manufacturing supporting aerospace, but also the anchoring economic sectors of the region, as well as to introduce new ones that would benefit from being close to the airport and all of the airside airport, as well as land side mobility and connectivity. Transitioning from that into the other private properties and ultimately towards the hospital, this is where we could see the flex tech and multi-tenant type uses, as well as commercial, the node I mentioned in LE one, serving the community. And then ultimately, this concentration around the hospital of biolife science and healthcare. This image is quite something. This is the new urban wellness village created by Covenant Health in the Millwoods area of Edmonton. And its purpose was really to help what's called decant things that don't have to be in the hospital, such as outpatient clinics for day surgeries, diagnostics, and also a lot of the educational side of healthcare. They will soon be opening this. The building is just being built through an innovative private-public partnership, whereby they've also woven in seniors' housing at all levels, as well as affordable and attainable housing, partnering with a residential developer who helped project manage the construction of this whole thing. So it was delivered quite quickly and very efficiently. And then we'll shift gears over to the west area, in the land side west. We believe logistics, I mentioned already, is a very strong candidate here, given the air and ground connectivity, but also perhaps the industrial agribusiness, leveraging what's already in the region, but giving the ability to scale up and perhaps even fly these products in and out through the airport or definitely by truck. There also is the opportunity for a truck stop and servicing complex somewhere in this LW one, around this intersection, and as I mentioned before, for commercial activities. You know, over time, it may be that some of the big box retailing that happens further in on a Hundredth Avenue might gravitate to these larger sites here, allowing some of these areas to, over time, redevelop with mixed use. In terms of timing and prioritization, we also identified a number of catalytic projects. The first one would be to enhance the terminal and the airside operations in the airside central district. And this is the top priority, of course, of the airport. The second, at the other end of the node, is to start to evolve and create this biolife, healthcare and urban wellness node in direct proximity to the hospital that would serve the local community, as well as being a destination attraction, and would help the hospital probably to attract more healthcare professionals of all levels to work in this cluster. The third, and this is a big one, is to facilitate the evolution and development of the east-west connector road between the airport and the hospital. And the good news is, a good portion of this road is on the city's airport property. Some of it's on provincial, and then some is on privately owned properties. The fourth is, I touched on a little earlier, but to establish an aerospace innovation and training node, specifically focusing on drone and unmanned air vehicle, testing, R and D, the training, and possibly even manufacturing and scale-up, as well as all of the alternative and green energy, including traditional energy that will fuel up aerospace. And then the fifth one was flagged by the InterVistas Airport Master Plan that the runway oh-seven-two-five, being the east-west runway, could expand into the west or the east to accommodate the future forecast air traffic and types of aircraft. But they said further cost-benefit analysis would need to be done to explore exactly where it should go, east or west. We, on our team, believe probably to the west is a better approach because then it would have less impact in that airside and land side east area that we showed in the framework concept. And then, as I mentioned, we looked at phasing and prioritization of uses, and I'll just zoom into the next slide. In dark red, we're showing where we believe the immediate sort of tenure horizon would be for activities, mostly to help embellish the existing air terminal area in airport central one and two, but also to start building this east-west connector road, sort of from the west, the airport, towards the hundred and sixteenth, and then at the other end, from the hospital, working its way west. We could also see that commercial piece along Hundredth Avenue in the bottom left and land side west evolving in that horizon. And then bolting onto that, these orange areas to fill out the east-west connector road in the east and as market demands or economic development opportunities around the eastern end of the runway system of the airport, but also to weave in this logistics piece in the airport west and how that manifests in LW two and potentially AS two, which is not currently city-owned property, but a directly adjacent private properties. There will be considerable economic impacts. We ran a typical economic impact model to look at things like construction time impacts, number of new jobs, and property taxes to the city. For the priority one, that was that red areas I showed, it's significant. For the concept framework area, just over seven hundred million in construction economic impact, and then a business output of about three hundred and forty-three million per year, creating about seventeen hundred direct jobs, plus another almost nine hundred indirect and induced, as well as ten million a year of property tax revenue. Now, over time, and this could be twenty years or more, those numbers will grow considerably. The construction impacts could be, you know, over six billion. The operating output, business output impact, over two-point-two billion a year, around ninety-three hundred direct jobs, and another fifty-nine hundred of indirect induced and sixty-five million dollars of annual property tax. So, you know, this is a significant opportunity catalyzed through the optimization of the Grand Prairie Airport. So now we'll shift gears. The last segment, and we're almost through the presentation, is, you know, what are the potential operating and development models that Grand Prairie Airport and the city could explore? It currently has the airport commission, and as Bob pointed out, it was very astute that the airport, sorry, that the city acquired the airport and owns it, and as I've always said, they should never, never sell it to anyone. The purpose of this was to look at who the airport might partner with and are they operating in the most optimal approach, not just to facilitate things like air route connectivity and terminal operations and the general operation of the airport, that is a top priority. But also, what about optimizing the airport's opportunity to stimulate economic development and for the real estate development of its properties? We started this by looking at who is in the business of doing this in Canada, in North America, and globally. And you can see some of the names there on the screen. Interestingly, even in Alberta, we have Calgary International Airport and Edmonton International Airport that don't only operate their major gateway airports, but also some smaller regional airports. And then in Winnipeg, Manitoba, the Winnipeg Richardson International Airport has a spin-off company called Winnipeg Airport Services Corp. that operates via Calwett Airport in Nunavut. You can see as we go down the list, there are others. Vantage Group operates in Canada and the US, the Caribbean, and internationally. Companies like AFCO and AVports are predominantly in the US and Europe. And then there's another group, you know, these are the international ones that may not have anything in North America now, or definitely not in Alberta. But they would be like the airports de Paris, Shangri Singapore, Munich, Fraport, Manchester Airport Group, and of course, the Dutch Netherlands Royal Skippel Group. Many of you, when you travel, I'm sure you've been through places like Frankfurt, Manchester, or Skippel Amsterdam, where you've seen what those organizations have done there. We performed an objective evaluation of each of those potential airport operating and development companies to see how they fared and how they scored in their approaches. And our criteria to do that evaluation included, on the left side, you see in this diagram, most importantly, their managing airport operations. Secondly, how do they optimize real estate development and their experience at that? And thirdly, how are they driving economic development? And then on the right side, we also calibrated it by whether or not they had experience or even interest in Canada and in similar-sized airports, and did they have any relationships already with Canadian airports? And in that process, it came down to, interestingly, the top three were Edmonton International Airport ranked number one, followed by the Winnipeg Airport Services, WASCO, and then Calgary International Airport. But it was clear, for various reasons, that Edmonton scored the highest, meeting the criteria in blue that you see on the left, as well as on the green on the right. Then we looked at what are some of the business operating models used by airports? And I won't get into all the details, but for each of them, we provided examples. And we always started by looking at the current, the airport commission model, and we had various evaluation criteria, I'll show you on the next slide. But we tested about, you know, in Canada, the approach of independent airport authority, or what about provincial municipal economic development corporations and their role partnering with airports? Development authorities like Calgary International has with the City of Calgary Municipal Land Corporation that partners with the airport to actually prepare zone and service properties to then offer to the marketplace. We looked at airport-centered joint venture approaches to offering properties, which both Edmonton International Airport and Calgary Airport Authority are involved in. And then private-public partnership models. For instance, Hamilton International Airport, which is also a city-owned airport, has a partnership agreement with Vantage Group and Tradeport, not just to operate the airport, but to develop it, that has led to things like the new DHL, UPS, and cargo jet facilities, and hopefully Amazon Prime Air as well, coming soon. And then finally, what about if it was a mixture of some of the above in what's called a special-purpose vehicle approach? And this is becoming more popular. I know Edmonton International Airport is doing this. I mentioned Pittsburgh before, did it for their neighborhood ninety-one. Advanced manufacturing, additive manufacturing node, just directly adjacent to their terminal area. So the criteria we used, again, were very similar. How about managing the airport operations? You know, the second was optimizing the real estate development. Thirdly was how it drives economic development. But then we looked on the other side at governance structure, maintaining governance control, in this case by the city. The financial flexibility to embrace partners on specific projects or sites or operations, and then the complexity to implement. And, you know, what seemed to come up from this analysis that we're seeing as a trend in the most progressive airports was the special-purpose vehicle approach. And this was followed by the, as we see in Canada, the independent airport authority and/or development authority and joint venture partnership, JVs. So if we zoom it in a little bit more, this is where we landed as what we believe is the recommended direction for Grand Prairie Airport. We believe that there should be a primary special-purpose vehicle or entity that would be controlled. In fact, all of these would be controlled by the city as the primary, I don't know if you want to call it shareholder, or the primary entity controlling it. And the first one should be for airport operations. And it would be very similar to the commission of today, the airport commission and its duties. But it would also explore and investigate embracing some of these new economic trends, like the drone and the tech and the sustainable airport fuel and renewable energy. And it would explore also the optimization of the airport's real estate. Now, once that's established, the other three that we would suggest would be a special-purpose vehicle or entity for real estate development, which might be slightly different to, in the composition of the partners, to the primary airport operations one, or it could be the same, or it may even bring in other partners that are more involved in property development and infrastructure. The third one would be a special-purpose vehicle for economic development. And that could pull in, in addition to the primary partners, others like Invest Grand Prairie, Invest Alberta, and Edmonton Global. And then here's yet another one that is so important, given that many airports are getting involved in microutility and energy, would be a special-purpose vehicle specifically for that, energy and utilities. You've already done this with Aqua Terra as an example, but perhaps it could be for other things here, like the electricity, photovoltaic, solar farms, and sustainable fuels and whatnot. Now, when we look at all of our research we did on the different potential partners, it was Edmonton International Airport. it was Edmonton International Airport that evolved through that objective evaluation as a preferred partner. But, you know, now this really is about exploring how might the city collaborate with a preferred partner moving forward? And as we always like to say, what are the steps to first take the baby steps of crawling, and then walking, and then running to evolve these special-purpose vehicles? Because, you know, at the end of the day, and this is the last slide, you have a very successful airport commission that has been very strong in evolving and operating the airport. But then there's these other pieces, perhaps, of optimizing the economic development and the real estate development and the energy side. So, you know, an alternative future could be to think of all the best of the airport commission on the operational side, and then form some kind of collaboration or explore that with a preferred partner to understand what efficiencies and opportunities there might be. And then from that, branch out into these three other special-purpose entities and vehicles, involving always the city as the primary group in that, and perhaps the preferred partner, and possibly even other partners. And, you know, that's where we evolved it to. As you move through this, exploring the collaboration, we call it risk-reward continuum, because the more risk you take on as you evolve these special-purpose vehicles, the more rewards will come as well. We always know that a critical piece of operating any airport is to generate non-aeronautical revenues and economic activities that will then help offset and be reinvested in offsetting the cost of the airport, not just to operate it in its current state, but as it grows over time for improvements. So with that, it's a pleasure. I'll hand it back to Shane, I believe, and Rory for the closeout of what happens next from this. Thank you.
Thanks for that presentation, Chris. I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Nicolay.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton, and thank you, Chris. And members of council, I'm sure that was a little bit like drinking from a fire hose. It's the culmination of a lot of hard work and consultation and deliberation, even debate and discussion that occurred over the past year. But you have been attuned to it throughout with the various workshops and engagement exercises that have been created. I want to just reiterate a point that Chris raised. We're really, while it seems like drinking from a fire hose, and all of a sudden there's a lot of decision-making to go on, we're really at the walk, crawl, run stage. We're still at the crawl stage. This is very, very preliminary. I think someone refined that metaphor a couple of days ago to say, yes, we're at the crawl stage, but we're reaching for the coffee table now, and we're just about able to stand up. So where we are in the process right now is trying to get a feel for whether this is the direction that council wants to go in. It's an important community asset, very important to the region. Is this the direction council wants to go in, and does this align with your interests? So we are trying to blend the work that a airport commission does, and airport management does in airport master planning, with the work that a municipality, a airport owner does in the broader planning context in terms of the values of the community. We still need the airport commission, and you've seen that throughout, even in the final state of this. We still need Grand Prairie Airport management. The work that they do to execute an airport master plan is vital. This exercise is really about, the city, or this phase is about the city exercising prudent and responsible management of a major city-owned asset. Same process we would use for any major city asset. So in terms of next steps, this was the beginning of the next phase. So this is the conclusion of a research and deliberation and stakeholder consultation phase that has occurred over the past year. Coming to city council today is really presenting the findings and getting your nod to move forward, to explore a relationship with Edmonton International as our preferred partner. They really did in an objective, expert evaluation of the capabilities and interests of airports or alternative airports. Edmonton International is a really natural fit for us, and your approval to move toward a non-binding memorandum of understanding with Edmonton International as the preferred partner to help us to develop the conceptual framework for the future. So this isn't about making a decision that will change how the airport operates at this time, or even how the land use develops. There's still a whole land use planning process that would have to occur, but are we in line with what council wants to see happen going forward? And with that, Madam Chair, I'll turn it over to Rory to introduce the admin report.
Thanks for that. Thanks so much for that. Mr. Tarrant.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. You know, as Mr. Nicolay had showcased, you know, administration has gone thoroughly through the economic framework presented by MXT and looked at a number of the recommendations that were provided. Obviously, you can see quite a lengthy document and number of recommendations provided, both on the land use and operational objectives that were provided throughout the report. In reviewing the report, we are recommending that, again, as was noted, that we take some baby steps to explore this, that we don't jump into it too quickly, but that we do some due diligence and really look at some of the options that were provided and explore them further. So obviously, out of that, our recommendations is that we accept, that council accept the report for information, recognizing that it has been provided and that the information is available. The next recommendation is that council directs administration to explore options for facilitating construction of an east-west connector road. As indicated in the report, in the framework, a lot of the potential land development opportunities hinge on having access to the lands available. And so we're suggesting that as one of the first steps in terms of that land use, we look at that, exploring what that would take to facilitate the building of a road there. And, you know, as noted, there is both private and public land that would be impacted, and so it's not as straightforward, looking at a cost estimate, but there is other options that would have to be explored in order to move that forward. The third recommendation is that council enter into negotiations for a memorandum of understanding with Edmonton International Airport to advance the alliance. Again, this is, you know, not approving a MOU, but it is enabling administration to move forward with those discussions with Edmonton International to begin to see what that would look like, and what potential collaboration there could be, and what bodies would need to be set up to support that collaboration. With that, if council would like us to proceed with those conversations, we are suggesting that some strong parameters be put in place that would guide those conversations, and, you know, key to that would be that the city retains full ownership of the Grand Prairie Airport. And then it spells out a number of the potential outcomes that we would want, potential partnership to explore, and those are listed within the report. With that, with those three recommendations, I will turn it over to the mayor.
Thanks for that, Mr. Tarrant. I just wanted to make one comment before I go to the queue with questions for either Mr. Tarrant, or Mr. Nicolay, or Mr. Letourneau. Following conversations with the commission members this weekend, as well as our consultants, Mr. Nicolay, I ask that council consider a revised motion that is in your eScribe. It's a more fulsome approach, and really confirms the role of the commission. It has, in my opinion, following some conversations, some easier language, and so the motion really identifies that the memorandum of understanding, which is a traditional document that many levels of government use as an opportunity for discussion, and actually quite often are celebrated, and that it's non-binding in principle. It's really an opportunity to have conversations, but formalizing that in a sense that people know that we're out there looking for opportunities and having these conversations, but also that a missing piece, I think, previously was in consultation with the Grand Prairie Airport Commission. The commission is a governance group of council-appointed community stakeholders who have done their due diligence in a governance role. They continue to have that governance oversight of financial matters. They have the governance oversight with the CEO reporting directly to the commission. And they, as community stakeholders, on a regular basis, talk about airport happenings. And so I think it's important to recognize that the airport commission be part of that motion, just to formalize that this MOU, if supported by council, would be an alliance between the city of Grand Prairie, Edmonton International Airport, in consultation with the Grand Prairie Airport Commission. So just one small change in your package there for consideration. And so now I'll go to council, and questions either for Mr. Nicolay, Mr. Tarrant, obviously our CAO, or Mr. Letourneau from MXT, recognizing first, councillor Plod.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Thanks for the report. Lots of information in here. Always love looking at the big picture, dreaming stuff of what could be in our future. I'm just curious, when I look at the report, there's on page 13, there's an AN2, an AN1, and an AS1, they're kind of airside north, airside west, and then also AC1. Are those lands currently serviced already? Like, are we market-ready for if somebody got proponent coming today to want to develop on those lands? I know AC1 has developable land, but are the other ones serviced already?
I'll look to Mr. Tarrant if you happen to know, and if not, I'll go to Chief Glavin. If somebody has the background information in regards to the lands that were identified by councillor Plod, if they are serviced or not.
And just maybe while they're looked at up here, if I can ask another question, they might, you know, I'm also just curious.
Sorry, just before you go to your second question, can you just repeat the lands again?
So they're on the map on 13, they're AN2, AN1, AS1, and AC1, which were, I believe, Mr. Chris had mentioned, they're airside north, airside west, and then it's the land around kind of the airport that's currently got service stars and other facilities in there now. So just wondering if they're serviced. And my second question would be, in the AC1 area, can I get a scope of how much land sales we've had in the last five or 10 years in that area, just to kind of get how much land we've been moving through in the last five or 10 years as well?
Okay, so AC1, the map is on your screen now, AC1 in regards to knowledge of any land sales in the last five years, and then the lands to the west, sorry, did you say LE432? Is that what you're looking at?
No, the AN21 and the AS1. And the reason I'm asking about those is I feel like those are gaps that we currently don't have. The other stuff would be nice to have, but I'm also seeing there's a lot of service land sitting in that area that's already vacant, that can seem to fit almost every other use that I heard the proponents speak of. So just those ones more specifically, I feel like if somebody wanted to come to our community to set up shop, they probably would need to be here on the airside. I don't know if we need an office building to be on an airport, but.
Okay. Mr. Chief Glavin.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So AN1 and AN2, I don't believe, would be near any servicing currently. They would have to be serviced. I'd have to get all this 100% confirmed, but I'm not aware of anything extending out to that area at this point.
Okay. And it doesn't have to be know, but any idea on the land sales?
That I don't know.
Thank you.
Counselor Pressley.
Great. Well, thank you, everybody, for the work that went into this. I think I describe myself as skeptically optimistic about it all. I very much do see strong potential for our airport in the future, and I think a lot of this work really does make sensible way of going towards it. But I also know that as we dig into it, there'll be things we discover that we didn't expect, and we'll have to change course as we go. But I think the most controversial thing is going to be the relationship with YEG. And I think the analogy I'd use for that is actually a relationship one where I don't know if I want to get married to them, like the end result in this is, but I'm sure interested in getting coffee with them. And whether or not we end up marrying them or not, I sure want to have a friendship with them and a tighter relationship than we have now. So really excited for the next steps that are here, and we'll see where steps after that go. A question I did have, though, and apologies for not bringing it up earlier, it's actually something I've only become aware of in the last six, seven weeks from talking to councillors in Wood Buffalo, but I want to talk urban reserve. And for council's benefit, that's a tool you can have in economic development in a municipality where you partner with a nation, and they actually create an indigenous reserve in an urban center, and it gets all the tax benefits of an indigenous reserve. But usually, they still sign an agreement with the municipality to essentially pay property taxes. They're exempt from property taxes, but before they form it, you have an agreement, so they actually essentially pay property taxes. But reserve is exempt from federal and provincial taxes in a number of ways, depending on what businesses happen on it. And it might be an unfair advantage that we could build around this airport to really trigger development here. There's tax advantages, but also, as I'm listening to this plan, I'm hearing there's hopes to tie into agriculture, to tie into forestry, to tie into oil and gas, all resource industries that really have emphasis right now on indigenous procurement and indigenous participation, and have to have that procurement and participation to get what they want done. And having an urban reserve that's close to airside or airside really could be a killer advantage that helps us get developed here. So my apologies for me not bringing it up earlier, because I wasn't aware of it until I learned about the cool work Wood Buffalo is doing, but I'm wondering if that's something that ever got considered, or has had any conversation as we're doing this work.
Mr. Nicolay, or sorry, Mr. Burke.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. This has been a topic that has been discussed internally, whether the city should pursue this. I understand there was work previously done and brought forward to council, and didn't to a previous council, and hadn't proceeded at the time. It has something that has been on our radar, although not specifically to this project. I think that that could benefit, though, again, from having a partner who are an alliance with someone who's done more familiar with, and what are the opportunities for urban reserves? But if it is something council's interested in, in learning more, that's something we can bring back, whether it's on this site or other sites in the city.
Great. If I may, Mayor Clayton?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's something I might have a motion at the end of debate when we resolve this to bring that forward, because I think it's something worth, it's a conversation I'd love to have in conversation with us, not really ready to tie it here, but I'm at the point where I'd like council to learn more about it, as we're also learning more about the airport. So I think I'm likely to make a motion about that later today, and appreciate some of that context.
Yeah, and if I would suggest that it be more of a fulsome conversation than just lands around the.
Yeah, and kind of my intent with the motion later today is just generalize information, but really intentionally doing it here, so we can have that information when the next touch point with the airport comes up today. I don't want to tie them together, but I want to make sure that we've got the information before us that we'll need to potentially tie them together in the future.
Because there have been, as Mr. Burke said, conversations over the years in different areas of lands where these opportunities are available, so good point. Sorry, Mr. Letourneau.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Letourneau.
Yes. No, I was just, I was going to say, great question, and there are examples. You mentioned Wood Buffalo, but interestingly, even Edmonton International Airport, for their Century Mile Casino Racetrack, I believe they're partnered with Indigenous First Nations. They also have in their Alberta Aerospace Technology Center on the airport, a number of partnerships with indigenous businesses. So it is happening. I've also seen how it crosses over with healthcare and airports, because it allows you to do things different in the Health Canada Act when you involve Indigenous First Nations. So there could be some competitive advantages of such a partnership or alliance, and it is interesting. We did not use that as a criteria in our evaluation, but just generally from knowing what I know, Edmonton International Airport does have such strategic relationships already evolving, and in this crawling baby steps would definitely be something to talk about in that exploration. Thank you.
Thanks for that. Recognizing councillor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton, and I really appreciate the plan and the opportunity that's brought forward by MXT. Now we can look 20 years into the future and say, here's the potential that we could have going forward. I think this is critical, as we have had 14 years of almost no development, and now we are going to lie or form an alliance with YEG that could open up connectivity to flights in other places, open up opportunities for customs, open up opportunities for hydrogen and connecting to better efficiencies in fuel, and possibly look at, and this is for Chris, could we be looking at a regional airport and connector to different cities in the north, to Peace River, to Fort McMurray? Is that a possibility? And I have caution, because we're only at. Is that a possibility? And I have caution, because we're only asking for an opportunity to sit down and have a discussion to see if it is possible. So if it isn't, I assume that we're not going to be able to go ahead if we see it, it's not to our advantage. And I really think it's important that we maintain control of the properties and at least have a plan. So Chris, what do you think of the regional custom and also the cargo opportunities that YEG has for us?
Mr. Letourneau.
Yeah, thank you for that question. Look, I think this whole idea of serving the north is a very important topic in northwest Alberta. I've been dealing with it elsewhere in Canada. I mentioned with Winnipeg and up into Nunavut, with Edmonton all the way up into Yellowknife. And, you know, Grand Prairie is in a very strategic position in that supply chain of not just moving people, but also products in Canada's north and particularly in northwest Alberta and northeast B.C. I think everything is on the table to consider. You mentioned the Customs Border Patrol. That's a big investment. And, you know, becoming involved with a strategic partner who already has that in place would be beneficial, perhaps, versus trying to create one of your own, because there's a whole bunch of steps that have to be taken. And it would definitely, I think, be beneficial to ride on the coattails of a preferred partner versus starting from scratch to attract such a thing. You know, it did come up with our stakeholders in the process. Almost all of them talked about air route connectivity and having more and better air route service. And interestingly, one of the routes that came up frequently was the connections back to Edmonton and not just Calgary, particularly when it had to do with, say, going for doctor or health appointments for things that don't exist currently at the regional hospital, but also business activities, business meetings and whatnot. So I think everything that you said, Counselor, makes sense. But at this point, it's exploring and what could be the efficiencies of having a preferred partner to pursue things like Customs Border Patrol.
Thank you.
Recognizing Counselor Burke.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. So Mr. Letourneau, excellent report. So much detail, and I know a lot of time went into it. So just a couple of quick questions. So no slight to the current team out at our Grand Prairie Airport, but what does YEG bring to the table that we don't currently have? And then I'll ask my second question after.
Mr. Letourneau.
Well, look, whether it's YEG or any of the other partners, potential partners or operators that we identified, they would have efficiencies. And even someone there, I think, mentioned things like tapping into bigger fueling contracts, tapping into bigger air route connectivities. They have a lot of experience with the property and economic development side of things, as would Winnipeg or even Calgary, but Edmonton seems to be very strong at those aspects. They also have efficiencies and leverage with CATSA at the security checkpoint, which every time I've been passing through, it seems to be challenged and takes a lot of time. But I know that with a preferred partner, they are dealing with higher levels of CATSA to make things more efficient, and perhaps even with better and up-to-date equipment that would process passengers more quickly. Food and beverage operations, all those kinds of things, they would have already a lot of alliances or deals with the major food and beverage and retail operators that would go within the terminal, but even on lands, like we showed on that highway commercial landside west area. So, you know, I think there's that. There's also the opportunity where there could be activities that just don't fit in these bigger gateway airports, and they need more affordable properties with airside slots, in which case they could actually refer end users to Grand Prairie Airport in a collaborative way versus a competitive way. So I think that's just touching on a few of what I believe would be the efficiencies, as well as the optimization of having a preferred partner versus purely just using the existing commission approach.
Yeah, thank you. And then just, oh, go ahead.
And the obvious one is they have leverage with the airlines, not only Air Canada WestJet, but any and all of the others as well. Sorry.
No, that's fine. So I've been fortunate enough to actually take two tours of the Edmonton Airport and see some of the innovations that they've been doing. So you touched on one a few moments ago with the Century Mile, but can you list off some of the innovations and some of the projects that Edmonton Airport has done the last 10 to 15 years?
Mr. Letourneau.
Yeah, I want to be careful that I'm not trying to be an advocate. We were doing our objective analysis, but just from what we've seen in the benchmark profiling, I mentioned their Alberta Aerospace Technology Center, where they took a former IAT, International Aviation Terminal outdated, obsolete cargo building, and turned it into a multi-tenant flex incubator space for various companies involved in innovation. One of them had to do with reinventing the APU units that heat up aircraft by using, and I don't know the details of it, but some kind of super use of fuel, particularly for Canada's north to be more efficient in how you ignite aircraft. Switching gears, I know just down from that Aviation Technology Center, they've got the Canadian North Hangar with the 737 flight training simulators are there. Very innovative. I also know that they were one of the first airports to embrace temperature-controlled supply chain with the Rosno Panatoni, temperature-controlled cold storage facilities that are driving a lot of the cargo activities. They have fully embraced the drone technology and have the company called, is it Nireum Analytical, that created the Robird, that, sorry, Arium Analytical, that created basically a robotic Falcon that originally the idea was to help avoid bird strikes in the aircraft on the runway. But then they've evolved this now, partnering with Edmonton International Airport, that it's become a complete GPS, GIS, geoinformatic, that it's digitally scanning anything from an airport to a city, to a road, to a mine, digitizing that into three dimensionings to create digital twins that you can then use for future prediction forecast of maintenance, repair, or even security. Speaking of security, Edmonton International has also invested in ground drones that keep deer out of the airport, but also work their way at night around the perimeter of the airport, even though people don't know they're there. They're basically quads. They're robotic and autonomous, and keep the security going at all hours around the perimeters of the airport. But that's just a handful. I mean, there are other areas that I know YEG is involved in, and you'd have to ask them in your interactions. But I also know that they're looking to expand that. And of course, this whole idea of interacting and supplying Canada's north are a key piece of that equation.
Yeah, thanks. And just, I don't think it's any coincidence that Amazon set up their big warehouse adjacent to the airport grounds either. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Counselor Burke. Recognizing Counselor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Mr. Letourneau, my question is for you. Can you talk a little bit more about special purpose vehicles? You've kind of outlined four different focus areas, and I'm wondering, are they going to exist as four separate silos? Or what's the connection between those special purpose vehicles and the management of the airport, regardless of how we choose to go forward with management?
Thank you, Counselor Blackmore, for that question. And just to finish on the last topic, when you brought up Amazon, Edmonton International actually already has a test-run facility working with Amazon for last mile delivery using drones. So I thought I'd throw that in. But Counselor Blackmore, very good question. I think it's going to require more exploration, but the idea was to have the primary special purpose vehicle for airport operations, and then optimization of airport properties would be probably the next one. The composition of who would be involved, I think the priority should focus on the first one, airport operations. But then, the same parties to that would be involved in the other three of real estate development, economic development, and energy utilities. But it may bring in other partners as well. And where I point to examples, I mean, here we go again, Edmonton International Airport does this exactly. For every business on the airport, as well as the property they sit on, they set up separate entities. Another example, who's very progressive, albeit they're overseas, is the Skipple Group. They always have at the core of ownership of any business and specific property on the airport, they have the Royal Skipple Group, which involves two municipalities, a county, as well as two banks, as their owning partners. But then depending who else is involved, it may have other partners as well, based on the nature of the special purpose vehicle. So I guess the priority in this exploring how to move forward, I wouldn't want to see them as silos because I'd like to see them that the primary partners, and obviously the city always being the controlling partner, would be on all of those SPVs, in which case there's cooperation between them. But that there could be additional partners on the, let's call them the outer three, which are real estate, economic development, and energy utilities. Even though they appear to be silos, they would work hand in hand with one another. But as separate vehicles, it would reduce risk and liability that they are in their separate, if you want to call them, silos, to keep them independent. And, you know, honestly, within each of those, there may even be further spinoffs with individual major tenants. For instance, if an aerospace company wanted to do something, or if an agribusiness wanted to do something, there could be yet another spinoff partnering with that entity for that major economic windfall of some kind of a major use.
So my understanding really is that it's a vehicle for managing contracts. So you might have a contract between an energy company, a utility company, and the city, and the airport. And that would be one special vehicle.
Yeah, I think it goes beyond just a contract managing. I think it also has an equity value to it that would have to be defined. And a lot of that will tie back to the role that the city can play, and that it has the real estate that such a business would operate on. So that there's a land lease piece to it, and what does that look like in equity value as the city's contribution or vested value versus what an end-user business would bring. But in terms of who's actually going to be managing all of that, and we often say, you know, is it in the current Airport Commission's strengths, or even the city's, to be managing real estate development at an airport? Or would there be other people that are experts in this that might be better at it and have bigger, broader access to opportunities and end-users, and ultimately we would call them tenants? So, you know, that, I think, is part of where MXT ended up with its recommendations, that we think by involving a bigger, broader partner, or maybe even partners, it could be plural, that it would, it would open you up to broader opportunities and definitely accelerate making those happen moving forward.
I have one other question. We've talked a lot in the last few months about drones and drone testing and drone everything. And I talked to a big farmer with a large number of acres a couple of days ago. We talked about the fact that drone test, or spraying crops with drones is in our future. It costs $150,000 for three drones to do the work of one $600,000 sprayer. So there's obviously, there's an opening there. But I also have heard that drones need to, you can't fly your drones out of a regular airport. They need to be, I don't know however many kilometers away. I don't know if that's true or not, and I just want you to tell me what you know about that.
Mr. Letourneau.
Yeah, another good question. It's not true. You can have a drone or a vertipor and man their vehicle. There is a setback requirement from the runway. And there is also a, again, this is someone like InterVistas would have to answer details, but there's a different airspace for drones, not too dissimilar to helicopters. And they cannot conflict with the inner-outter approach of a runway, or there's a distance setback of the size of runways. But yes, I mean, Edmonton's doing it right now with Robird and other drone activities. So on our most recent projects we've done, we did something in Regina, and I mentioned Pittsburgh, and there's various others where we have identified where not just drone, but any kind of advanced air mobility vehicle could be situated. And I think with the amount of property that the city owns at Grand Prairie Airport, there definitely could be some spots where that could happen. I think it would be wise to have, whether it's, if you have conversations with Edmonton International Airport, to ask them that specific question, or even the Airport Commission's consultant at InterVistas to ask them as well. I know InterVistas is well versed in that because we're doing this on other projects right now.
I'm ready to debate.
Okay, well, we'll get there. We'll get some motions on the floor. But in case any of my colleagues have any further questions for any proponents, I see Counselor Plot in the queue.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. And sorry to the council. I've definitely got my share of questions. So probably I'll go a couple more, and I'll go to the queue, and then I'll keep coming back in. But I'm just wondering, really, really large, major decision, and even though it's an MOU, it signals that we're looking at changing or having an alliance. And so is it possible, or is council going to receive a criteria selection of what was done on this? I know there was a quick slide, and in camera, we're not supposed to take pictures or write things down when we're in camera. There's no criteria in this report of how they got to choosing the proponent they've chosen. So I'm just wondering, are we going to get that to look at in further detail? And has the commission had a chance to look at that in further detail as well? Or is it just this is a report we're going to see, and this is what we're using for information?
Mr. Burke.
Yeah, council were provided with a workshop that walked through that information. I am happy to share further information with council in an in-camera format on those specific evaluations.
Okay. And I guess maybe, before I could make motions that I could support this, I would, I'd need to be comfortable with that. There were several quick things when I looked on it that I'd like to know how they were using fairness on some of those. So for me, I personally wouldn't be able to support moving forward on this stuff because I don't feel comfortable with a couple of the things that I saw really quickly in an in-camera that we're not supposed to take pictures or write stuff down on. My other question is in the same vein, is I've heard lots that there was lots of consultation done. I've heard from NWP there was, but that's the only person I've heard in the community that's actually said that they were consulted. I've had several people say they weren't that are land adjacent owners to the parcel. So I'm just, again, don't want that to be public. But I'd like to just know that we're crossing our i's, dotting our i's, crossing t's, that kind of stuff before we do this sort of thing. And those two are just making me a little bit uncomfortable because I don't feel that I have enough information on those two right now personally.
We'll just get a chance to respond. Mr. Burke.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. There was consultation done with broad sectors, but that is why, even in the report, we believe that further consultation is required and have outlined that as part of the MOU is, we got to a stage where we needed to introduce this to the public, and that's today. And so that we can have some of those further discussions on what the actual outcomes are moving forward with this step today. Moving forward with this step today allows us to have some of those discussions if counsel so chooses to proceed. And that's the point we'd got to today, is we'd ended, we'd got to receive information from a consultant, done some internal analysis, put forward some modest recommendations, not the entire recommendations from the consultant, but some modest recommendations, and thought it was valuable to come to counsel or make sure that we were on a path that counsel supported. And so that's the intent of today, which then would lead to either discussions with an alliance partner, if that's the wish, but then also further consultation on what some of the specifics would be with the community, including adjacent landowners.
If I recall, in that first round of consultation, the list was quite extensive, including healthcare sectors, private industry sectors, education. There was quite a list, and I don't have it in front of me, but...
I don't have it in front of me either, but some additional were transportation sector, energy sector, education, health, as some of the primary ones. Logistics was also included in that list.
Okay. I have more, but I'm not sure if you have the...
No one else has questions.
Okay. My other question, I guess, is I'm really curious on the alignments. There was three options that were put in there. If we were to look at this alignment, since one of our recommendations is this east-west corridor, are we assuming the east-west corridor is aligning how we originally had in the plan? Because I believe the other chance of ones would have to major ASP changes as well. So are we, are we actually going to go through that exercise and say yes to it, and then go through ASP exercises and changes as well, and then have to do all those corridor sections over again?
Mr. Burke?
And again, that's why it's a modest recommendation in advancing. So there's a whole bunch of pieces that would have to happen if that is the decision. And including formal consultation processes, if it was to realign with the ASP. I'd say we're premature. We're saying, is there merit in an east-west corridor? And we believe there is. Some of it's within our control. Is it land owned by the city or through the commission, on behalf of the city or private? So there's a whole bunch of pieces that would have to come, which is why we would recommend if there's support to proceed, there would be further information brought as part of the budget processes that would likely include some expenditure.
So do we, if we, again, if we were to go ahead and approve that today, do we have an idea of what that's going to cost us to explore that? We're going to have to do engineering, design study, all kinds of stuff. Have we got a budget amount of that? Are we just doing that? Normally, we put budgets attached to stuff like this. So I'm just curious why there's no budget attached to this.
So I'm assuming by, based on the motion and the report, that all that information would come back. Right now, the motion is to explore options for facilitating this. I don't know if there's anything to that, Mr. Burke?
Just to confirm, that some of the minutia, it would depend on where discussions go. And so that would be a budget discussion. So is there interest in us referring this to budget and us bringing back the costs for that before we proceed with any work? Is the intent of the recommendation right now?
My question for our consultant would be then, is we're looking at building a road that leads to a road we already have, to land that isn't serviced. Would we not be better at looking at servicing that land and getting it market-ready than just building another road that already gets to it? I'm just curious why we're not worrying about servicing the land that we want to have market-ready versus potentially asking administration to go build another road when we already have access to land that doesn't have services?
Mr. Luttrell?
Look, I think it's a bit of both. I think you just can't build a road on its own. It's road and services. And my understanding is there is some services in the 116th area, sanitary sewer already. But yeah, look, we didn't get to the fine grain of understanding the details of servicing. It was a framework concept to understand what could go where, and what makes logical sense to reflect market trends and what we heard from stakeholders' opportunities and from the case study benchmarks. But I mean, it would suggest that we take advantage of, obviously, if there's existing service, servicing, trunk servicing to connect to. And it's probably a two-step approach. Don't just think about the east with a new connector road, but also that landside west area, at the southwest portion of the study area, connecting to 100th and Highway 43 in that vicinity. The thing that we found intriguing as a consultant on this east-west connector road is that the city, through its airport land, already controls a big chunk of that. And then at the other end, the province, and of course, the hospital is there. It just seems like such a strong anchor to start coming from that direction where there clearly is servicing. So, and you know, you do use a very interesting term of being, you know, serviced or shovel-ready and tapping in. I would see that as yet another next step, is the understanding of the servicing layer and the associated high-level cost of what it might take to not just put a road in, but a road and services. And I would caution you that in Winnipeg, in the Centreport, Canada area, which was a provincially-driven initiative on the west side of Winnipeg Richardson International Airport, they did build a road, but they didn't build the water and sanitary sewer services at the same time. And it's caused quite a problem or a situation that only now is being resolved. And funny enough, it's the airport that is taking the initiative to make that happen on the west side and accelerate and figure out how the sewer will get built and the lift station, how the water servicing will go in, in addition to the road that the province participated in, the Centreport, Canada way. So absolutely, to look at them all at the same time.
And I'm going to, just one more on this road. I'm still curious, I guess, I'm driving down 104th Ave from the hospital. I hit 116th Street. I could turn right and go up half a section and go onto a new road, or I can turn left, go down, and come into an existing road. I just, I guess for me, I don't see how that changes industry's thinking of whether they're going to go there because it might save them 30 seconds. And I guess we've got hundreds of vacancies. There's, I guess my other question for minister on this, are we, are we trying to compete with industry on landside development when we have 160 acres almost of developed land that's been sitting there for almost a decade? Is that the intent or goal? Are we trying to compete with industry on service land now to bring more roads and more services and to produce more service land?
Mr. Burke?
It comes from the view that airport and airport-adjacent land has a different value than the, than private sector. Certainly, there'll be some overlap, but it's coming from that view that if we put in the right access and the right services, that they will see an intrinsic benefit to being attached to an airport. That doesn't make sense for every industry, but then the intent isn't necessarily to be a direct competition. We do believe there's extra value. But it will be dependent on how far we go with the shovel readiness of the land. And that's where we haven't got to yet. It's whether we're going to bring that information back for counsel to deliberate at budget time.
Just one last question, then I just, I appreciate...
One other...
Oh, sorry, okay.
Thanks. Counselor O'Connor?
Just to build on what Counselor Plott has brought up, is, isn't there area structure plans in between the airport lands and the hospital? And would this adversely affect any of the properties that we would look at? I know we're just in the exploration stage, but I'm just wondering how that would affect developers' lands. And that would concern me if it does. If we're just looking at what the cost would be and putting all the underground services in, I think that's great. But if you're going to affect somebody's area structure plan, I think there needs to be a little bit more thought on it.
Mr. Burke?
And that's exactly some of the next steps. It's not to approve any of the conceptual ideas that have been proposed by the consultant at this time, but it's to look at a preferred alliance and see what information they have about whether this is worth proceeding, along with conceptual idea or not. And then also having those consultations with the landowners, which would be required if we were to make any of those changes. So very valid points, and we're mindful of those concerns and the processes that have to go forward. We do think there is some opportunity, but that would flesh out through further process.
Yes. I'm just wondering, then, is there a benefit by putting the pricing together for this connector road and having all those services committed with it? Would that be a benefit for those area structure plans in those areas?
Mr. Burke?
Possibly. And if there's counsel support to proceed with this initiative, those are the kind of questions we would answer and bring back information for counsel.
Counselor Plott, sorry, I'll go to Counselor Blackmore.
I just would like the city manager, if you can, to confirm with me. I believe the design for this road was referred to the full budget session already.
Mr. Burke?
Well, that was 1:32, not this one.
Mr. Burke?
And I'll go by my strong recollection was that there was encouragement to talk to the Airport Commission about whether work should proceed. There's been some preliminary discussions with the airport CEO, but those have been paused as we continue to work on this project.
That's not how I remember it. However, I'm not going to ask you to sign a document right now swearing to it.
We'll certainly review that motion. The direction to discuss with the airport CEO was, has happened.
Okay.
Counselor Plott?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Again, the signaling and the working on MOU, I think, has some concerns for some folks, maybe not, maybe not some in the room, but I've definitely had my share of calls on it. So I'm wondering, I know the commission and the CEO have had several touchpoints like we have as a counsel. Have they endorsed this plan? Are they in full support of this? Have we received anything from the commission that says that? Or how does that look with the CEO and our commission that think that this is a good idea to move forward with, working with YEG?
Mr. Nickley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Interesting question. This is the city's asset that the city is doing its plans on. The involvement of the commission has been consultative and not an approval process. They were involved, we began our work with the commission over a year ago and detailed what we were looking at, what we were trying to accomplish. They were part of the stakeholder consultation group, so the chair of the Airport Commission and the CEO were directly involved in the stakeholder consultations. And then we had a session with the Airport Commission as this began to take shape and as the recommendations are coming forward. Their approval or concurrence was not solicited. Their sphere of responsibility is the operation of the airport. This is about land development proximal to the airport and even not proximal to the airport. It's thoughtful planning by the city about economic value to owning and operating an asset. So short answer, Counselor Plott, is they were not asked for their concurrence or approval, but they were definitely consulted.
And if I could just add, and that's sort of the consideration, why, a bit of the change to the language in the motion, that it's in consultation with the Airport Commission. And so, you know, there's an opportunity there. Great conversations around connectivity and I think potential land uses. You know, this commission, as appointed by counsel, commission of community stakeholders, they're not airport land developers. They are, in essence, community stakeholders that serve a governance role. But however, I do think it's important for the consultation with the Airport Commission, and that's why in the motion, it had some language change around that.
Just, I guess, to follow up on that, our CEO and our staff out there, I thought have done a pretty diligent job. Have we put in a formal letter saying, hey, we'd like you to work on some things? If we're going to go to have an MOU with Edmonton, it's because we want to improve things. Have we looked internal and asked them if they can solve those things before we go external? Have we formalized anything with our current commission or our current CEO, asking them if they could do these things without us having to go to an MOU with Edmonton?
So there are a few things, and then I'll turn to Mr. Burke. I know that the CEO of the airport has been very, and the commission as a whole, has been very open to conversations around airport land development. They were very clear that this is not an area of their expertise. And in addition, over multiple of years and conversations with the airport and the CEO and the commission chair, we explored opportunities for areas improvement. We, on a regular basis, hear about security line issues. We hear from the public that they're looking for more connectivity, a stronger customer experience. And within the mid-sized city airports, there's some limitations. If you're a mid-sized city airport across Canada, you're not the person at every table. You're not invited to every conversation. The five top largest airports in Canada are invited to these conversations. And so to have an opportunity to be part of those conversations, to be invited as an ally to one of those top five airports is a win. And in addition, when there's no cost to us, in addition to the fact that this MOU would be non-binding. So there's many pieces in this that is truly just an alliance. It's strengthening what we've tried and attempted to do all term in strengthening friendships and strengthening alliances, in finding partners that can provide us information. And on top of this, we're getting it for free and from one of the largest players in the country. So we have heard for many years, feedback from our community, from our municipal partners in the county, in opportunities for expansion in cargo, in serving the north, many, many conversations and topics of feedback. So yeah, I would say, yes, we have had those conversations.
Okay.
Counselor Blackmore?
I just wanted to make the comment that this whole conversation started when a development company came to us and wanted to build a hotel. And even though our strategic plans, as we focus on economic readiness, it became fairly clear in that process that we were, in fact, not economic-ready, and we're not in a position to move forward at the airport. I've been on the Airport Commission off and on since 2001, and there's been many attempts over those years to develop airport lands, to make the lands more viable and more economically positive for the city. And ultimately, every time, nothing has really happened due to the fact that the airport management is not able to respond because they have no, they're just not experts in those areas. And so every single time, we've defaulted back to the status quo. And I think that if we want to continue the conversation, this is the time where you want to push through that status quo. And I know there's lots of undeveloped land in the city. It's privately owned, and I'm sure every one of those landowners is trying to figure out his best way to move forward to realize a return on his investment. The lands at the airport are city-owned, and therefore, it's in our, it falls on us to look forward, look for ways to get a return on investment for our taxpayers. And currently, in the last 60 years, we haven't done a very good job of that at the airport. We have the potential to learn more from other people who are experts in the field and to maybe engage them in that process. And so I really believe that if we don't do it now, when will we do it? If not today, then when? And so, Mayor Clayton, I would like to move that we receive the MXD Development Strategist's Grand Prairie Airport Economic Regional, Economic Framework for Information, and so we can start moving forward on business.
Thank you. So that motion is in order. I will just say, I know, Mr. Luttrell, you've extended the time that you had for us today. You're more than welcome to stay on, but thank you for the information, as well as the questions that you were able to answer. Appreciate it. And if you need to jump off, that's understandable.
Well, I can stay on if you'd like me to.
You're more than welcome to stay on, but yeah. Thanks so much.
And then at 2:30, I have to go. Or what, 3:30 or something?
Okay, sounds good. So Counselor Blackmore's motion is in order. Opportunity for discussion or debate on the motion, as in your e-scribe. Seeing no one, I'll call the question on the motion. And that carries unanimously. Counselor Blackmore, did you wish to continue, or is...
Yes, I would move that committee recommend administration to explore options for facilitating the construction of an east-west connector road as identified in the framework.
Opportunity for discussion or debate on that motion. That motion is in order, recognizing Counselor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. To me personally, I think this exercise is a complete waste of time if we're not going to talk about servicing the land within the airport. We already have land ready to go that is, if it's not serviced, then let's figure out how to service that. Building another road, in my opinion, is not going to move the needle on whether we get developments in there. So I would, I guess I would just like to know if administration would be, am I okay to amend this motion to add that? Or would that be a separate motion? Because I'm not... Because I'm not in support of this motion unless we're going to do the whole exercise, because I don't know what this would even be for.
Mr. Burke.
Think through the motion. I, I think we'd prefer a separate motion on, on bringing forward recommendations on making the land, or servicing the land. Let's do that as a separate motion. Brian, Chief Glavine, has any?
Has he had any comments?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, I know, I think, advice from the city manager.
I guess my, my comment was, would be, in a grand scheme of things, that would all happen at a similar time, so I'm, I'm not sure why you would separate them.
We, just because I'm unsure of exactly whether they are related projects, so we will treat them as related and bring forward options that are the, the most economical for, for, for the city. Just having them separated just would, would just ensure I had enough flexibility. If there was, we saw something that said, you know what, it should just be this one servicing part with no road, that we would do that. So we will treat, we will bring forward the most economical options available. Treating them as separate just gives me a little more flexibility.
So I'll come back to you after this one, Counselor Plot.
Can I just follow up?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just curious on that, I appreciate that. I'll, I'll write up a motion for this one afterwards. I'm just curious on that, then. If, if this were to pass as it's, as it is in our package today, is this just an administrative report, so no cost externally yet, there's no, no expenses being borne from the city or the commission or the airport or anybody else at this point?
Mr. Burke.
That's the intent of it, is that we would bring any costing or future plans available to, to budget in the fall.
Okay, thank you for that.
So I see no one else in the queue with questions, discussion or debate on that motion as in your eScribe, so I will call the question on motion number two. And that carries unanimously. And if you're ready, or I can come back to you, Counselor Plot. Okay.
So I would just recommend that administration bring back a report on what it would cost to service lands. Just, I'm sorry, I want to get the right wording on page 13 again here. In the AN1, AN2, AC2, and AS1 land proponents on E13. And just to speak to that again, I guess if we want to be service-ready for some of these potential big projects that may come if we get a new proponent or a new land manager, I think that's just diligence on us to, to be ready for that part. The road could come after that, in my opinion, but happy to support both for now. But I, I do think this would be good information for us to have, is if we did get a supposed whale that came, they're going to want to know that information anyways, and we're going to ignore costs on it.
So we'll give, so does that reflect what you're thinking, Counselor? Plot, if you scroll down there. Okay, perfect. So discussion, debate on the motion from Counselor Plot. So that motion is in order. I see no one in the queue with discussion or debate, so I'll call the question. Counselor O'Connor, could you just tell us how you vote? It's not registering. Oh, got it now, thanks. And that carries seven to one. Moving on, can I go back to you, Counselor Blackmore?
Yes. I would move that committee recommend council direct administration to enter into discussions for a non-binding memorandum of understanding with Edmonton International Airport to advance an alliance between the city and YEG in consultation with the Grand Prairie Airport Commission in accordance with the following principles and expectations. That the city retains full ownership of the Grand Prairie Airport, and that the alliance is mandated to improve the passenger experience by exploring opportunities for economic corridor development, to maximize the economic potential of the GPA by optimizing potential development and real estate opportunities, to collaborate on regional development, regional economic development initiatives, supporting the city's efforts to grow and expand a diversified commercial and industrial base, to explore new and emerging technologies and processes to improve and streamline GPA operations, and to liaise with key community and business stakeholders to understand market demands and potential growth opportunities. I've said a lot about why I support this initiative already, so I will provide a closing when the time comes, but I don't need to say more now.
Thanks for that, Counselor Blackmore. That motion is in order, recognizing Counselor Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Emily, you seem like, Hollowood says it's non-binding. My, my concern with this is that I feel like once you let the horse out of the barn with us, that we've picked a partner. And, and I, and I don't mind if YEG is the right person. If we're doing MOUs, though, I just want to ask administration, why wouldn't we be doing this with Calgary and Winnipeg, or Calgary and Vancouver as well? Our proponent talked about passenger movements. Quite frankly, Edmonton, in my opinion, a lot of great things here, like, like, think they'd be a great land manager potentially for us. I don't think they're changing the needle on our passenger movements. They don't have control of their passenger movements. So I'm curious why we wouldn't be talking to Calgary and Vancouver, where WestJet and their Canada live, on an MOU as well, and why we're just picking Edmonton.
I would say that the question time for the proponent was, and he's no longer on the call, so.
That I can support this, if we're only going to pick Edmonton, because I don't think that's the best thing for our city long-term. I think we could be signaling to other regions that we've picked our pony and our horse in our race. I don't like that we're only picking one. I think Calgary and Vancouver have a ton of alliance potential for us as well. They have different ideas. These are three different airports that we could be dealing with. I don't feel comfortable that we're single sourcing or single picking an MOU with just Edmonton. Appreciate all the work done by the consultants. When our passenger movement show that people are going to Calgary more than Edmonton, and our flights are continually more to Calgary than Edmonton, and WestJet lives in Calgary, I think it would not be the smartest thing for us to support just doing an MOU with Edmonton. So, I won't be supporting it. Thanks.
Recognizing Counselor Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I know that there's a, there's five different bullet points in here, and I actually strongly share Counselor Plot's concerns about the fourth bullet point, which is explore new and emergency technologies and processes to improve and streamline Grand Prairie Airport operations. It's, I, if this was just about airport operations, then I'd be opposed to this process completely. A, I think that our commission actually is doing a really good job, and our staff are doing a really good job actually operating the airport. You can always get better, any organization can get better, but I'm really happy with the actual airside operations that are going on right now. And my colleague is right, if we were looking at just operations, then I want to go, I wouldn't want to sole source this, I would want to actually go out to market, do that properly. But for me, this is a lot more than operations, and that's the small side of this. This really is about the economic development side, and it is about the potential future land development and the, and getting Grand Prairie onto more, more maps and more boardrooms and more investment decisions. And again, to use my analogy from earlier, I'm not sure if I want to marry YEG yet, but right now, we're friendly acquaintances, and I sure want to be, become closer friends with them. And I see the MOU as that coffee date going out and exploring, hey, do we have something here that we want to go on a few more dates and we want to actually get into a serious relationship? And for me, when it comes to economic development, nobody's going to bring the benefit to us like I could see Edmonton doing. I think that Edmonton region's doing some really cool things, working together as a region, to their languages, to hunt for a pack, hunt as a pack, and to bring international as well as national investment to their region. And every time I talk to the partners that are around those exciting tables in Edmonton that really are leading Canadian innovation in a number of spheres, including agriculture out processing, including artificial intelligence, and a few other industries too, every time I talk to partners in Edmonton, they recognize that Grand Prairie is a worthwhile partner, and they want to partner with us, but I don't think they often remember us. That being said, I've always appreciated YEG as a very prominent partner at those economic development conversations in Edmonton, they always do seem to remember us. And so they really have demonstrated to me in the past that they're good-faith partners that want to see our economy thrive and want to see those links between us and the capital region, region thrive. And I don't think there's any other partner in the world that can help us elbow away into those conversations about what's going on at the, in the gateway city, and what's going on in the Edmonton region, how it could be shared further up north. And so I really do think for the economic development reasons, YEG is a very interesting conversation for me to have, so I'm very interested in exploring a far more relationship with them. Doesn't mean I'll be committed to it once we're done that exploration, but very, very interested in the exploration.
It's your comments, Counselor Burke.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. One point around the Vancouver airports. I believe the report actually did a, an international call for interest. Manchester, England was one that submitted, I don't think Vancouver did. And I'll compliment our, our current team for a mid-sized city. Our airport does very well with our flights compared to most mid-sized cities around Alberta and even Western Canada, we're doing really well. But I do want to see growth, and I want us to move forward. And by doing nothing, if this is defeated and goes nowhere, then we achieve nothing. So this is, again, the first step forward for me, but also something that I learned, I was at the Alberta Chamber of Commerce Awards in Calgary on Thursday. And the innovation that is happening in Alberta was shocking to, I think, everybody in the room for some of these award winners and nominees. But it shouldn't be, because Alberta has always been extremely innovative on a global scale. And they're looking for partners actively and, and to push the boundaries on what we can do. So coming from that, some of these innovative processes around drones and technology is actively happening in Alberta, and if we create that opportunity here, then hopefully we could see some of that move here. I don't expect us to dominate in it, but if we can share in it, I think that certainly helps our city.
Counselor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I think all, and the consultation from MXD went out and spoke to all of the proponents that they sent out requests to, and I think these are the ones that scored the highest. There was no interest from Calgary, there was no interest from, from Vancouver, and unless you can prove to me otherwise, I think it's, it's important that we take a look at the opportunity. We're not getting married. We're just exploring the opportunity to see what we could. And I think, you know, exploring new and emerging technologies and processes to improve and streamline GPA operations would be a valuable thing, because we don't know what we don't know. So why should we close the door because we're going to close our minds off to what's happening that could improve our operations, improve our investment, improve connections to the world? I think we're missing an opportunity. If we're going to start nitpicking, let's just let our administration or our team go forward and get this information and bring it forward to us, and then we can have a conversation.
Thanks for your comments, Counselor O'Connor. I'm just going to chime in quickly before I go to Counselor Blackmore to close. I would say, in Counselor Bressi's concerns on the one bullet, on a regular basis, as, as elected officials, we hear from our community about opportunities for improvement at the Grand Prairie Airport. That is not to say that the status quo is, is not serving us currently, but I do hear on a regular basis, and I know many of you around the table do as well, about issues that we'd like to see improved. That may be food and beverage service, that may be security lines, that may be connectivity to other airports through tier three carriers, that may be expansion and the internal retail opportunities. And to assume that we can fix those on our, on our own, I don't think is realistic. And so we know that YEG has extensive experience, as do other airports, fair enough, but Edmonton's experience is extremely valuable to us, as they have experience in the day-to-day operational initiatives that we currently haven't moved the needle on. And so the, and, and you're right, Counselor Bressi. Edmonton, whether it's in economic development, whether it's in tourism, whether it's in air travel, they recognize the value of Grand Prairie at the table. And I have had conversations with Calgary Airport. Their focus is Lethbridge and Medicine Hat, and Edmonton's focus is in Grand Prairie. And when you look at the mandate letter put forward by the premier, and when you look at initiatives such as economic corridors that are being led by Emily Getson, the alignment is Edmonton to Prince Rupert, the alignment is Edmonton to Northern Alberta. And so to have a partner that's strategically located, that is specifically identified within mandate letters from the premier, aligns with the initiatives of the provincial government, knowing that there's a Strategic Aviation Council that has all of the airports across Alberta at the table, there are opportunities that we will have by having an alliance with Edmonton International Airport. I will, thank you for that opportunity, and I'll go to Counselor Blackmore to close.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Just to add one thing, I know that Vancouver didn't respond to the survey at all, so they were totally not interested. Calgary said they were not interested in working with Grand Prairie, and it is on that chart that has been referenced. The airport operations in Grand Prairie has expressed some sceptible, skeptibility about Wasco out of Winnipeg. And Manchester would really like to operate our airport, in fact, they'd like to buy our airport, but they're not interested in development. So, you know, there were a lot of discussions with a lot of different places that didn't meet the criteria that we had set out. And so for that, I think that we need to, to keep moving forward and write the MOU with YEG. And, and in, at the end of the day, if we don't like what we hear, we're not, we're not committed. I suspect we will like what we hear, just from what I know from being around airport and airport management. But I ask you to support this motion as the next step in, in a number of steps yet to come.
Thanks for your close, Counselor Blackmore. I will call the question. That's carried seven to one, recognizing Counselor Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. And as I indicated earlier, I would like to make one sort of related motion, and that is that committee would direct administration to report to the appropriate standing committee with high-level information about urban indigenous reserves and their potential economic development advantages. And just speak this, again, I'm not trying to tie it to the airport specifically right now, but I do want that information in hand for council, so that next time we discuss the airport, we can potentially tie it to the airport at that time. So I hope that you'll support this motion.
I'll just say really quickly, I appreciate your motion and will support your motion. I don't see anyone else in the queue. Counselor Blackmore, you're in the queue, but is that still?
I'm sorry.
Okay. And so I don't see anyone in the queue. We're just going to give the moment, the Ms. Van Bleeckfeld, a moment to get that all in the eScribe, and then we'll go from there. Does that address what you were hoping to accomplish, Counselor Bressi? All right, I'll give one more chance for council, opportunity discussion and debate. Seeing none, I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Nicley, appreciate your work on this.
Thank you very much. Ironically, I have a plane to catch. Thank you again.
I'm going to take a 15-minute break. We do have, still have a fair amount of work to do, but it has been two and a half hours of sitting, so I will ask that you have your, have some patience, and we'll see you back in 15 minutes. Thank you. Welcome back to the council committee, the whole of June 23, 2025. We are now on item 4.2, the budget update. It's a verbal update. And I apologize for our delays today. We're a little bit behind. We had some IT issues. But now I will get going on the other items as in the agenda, first being the budget update verbal. And I'll turn it over to our CFO, Ms. Whiteway.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. And just ahead of my budget verbal update, I would like to take just a quick opportunity to correct a number in your next report, the Community Enhancement Funding Project Feasibility Review. So the balance available, I had provided unfortunately, an incorrect amount to Director De Vries on this. So the actual amount available for capital enhancements in the Community Enhancement Reserve is actually $665,451.43. So the $200,000 that was allocated on November 15 was still in future expenditures reserve, unfortunately. So that's why the number was off. This was also incorrect at Q1 in the quarterly report. So that has been corrected as well for the second quarter report. So my apologies on that. But the amount available, just for information, $665,000 rather than the $465,000. And with that, I will move into a brief verbal update for Budget 2026. As councils well aware, administration works starting in the spring right through until late fall when deliberations occur with council. Public engagement sessions have already been held at various city facilities. And this allowed for an opportunity for members of the public to learn more about city operations as well as provide their feedback. Continued online budget engagement is available on the city's website until July 4. So far, departments have worked hard at submitting their operating salary and capital plans to the financial services team. And we will continue throughout the summer to do a number of tasks in order to prepare for deliberations in the fall. So over the coming months, we'll continue to analyze the services provided and the budgets associated with those, the contractual obligations, whether employment or other for services and materials will be looked at for any contractual increases, changes. We will also look at the inflationary impacts on the city's budget and our usage over the past few years to form future projections. We'll also look at some long-term forecasting projections and capital plans to ensure adequate funding and that we're prepared for the future. We also provide thorough evaluation and efficiency opportunities or areas of improvement where we may be able to see some opportunity. We prepare all of this in hopes to present a reasonable tax increase to council in late November. I'd also like to additionally brief council on administration's approach to capital projects this year. Typically, we do bring forward a mid-year capital report where we allow departments an opportunity to identify any emerging needs that may not have been able to be captured during the budget process. Nothing was identified for 2025. So all departments do feel that the capital plans they have in place are adequate to continue through the year. So we are now looking at thoroughly reviewing all existing projects in the queue to ensure So we are now looking at thoroughly reviewing all existing projects in the queue to ensure A, it's still required, B, that they will be required to the amount originally budgeted. And if anything needs to change, we are looking to present to council any funding that may be made available or any changes to capital projects with budget deliberations in late November of this year. You will see an update on capital as you do every year at the Q2 financial report. That is expected after break. As we progress, we will continue to update council, and we will provide another update in September with deliberations scheduled in November for the 19th, 20th, and 21st. Thank you, and happy to take any questions.
Thanks for that, Ms. Whiteway, recognizing Council Blackmore.
Chief Whiteway, I'm curious if you know, if you don't, it's fine. You should just send a quick email. How many people actually participated in community engagement sessions, the in-person ones, of course?
Ms. Whiteway.
Thank you for the question. Through the mayor, we're, once we get that number, I will circulate that via email to council.
Thanks.
Seeing no one else in the queue, that was a verbal update, so I'll continue to move on on the agenda. Item 4.3, Community Enhancement Funding Project Feasibility Review, and I will turn that over to Chief Glavine for introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So administration has prepared a variety of opportunities for council consideration that align with the recently approved and funded Community Enhancement Fund policy. The opportunities that are presented have a range of installation timelines, and some have the ability to be scaled up or down, and all are at the discretion of council. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. DeVries.
Good afternoon, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So Environment Parks was tasked to review the feasibility of various proposed community enhancement projects following recent council approvals, and as the CFO mentioned, a total of $665,451 is now available in the reserve for those enhancements. In the report, you'll notice there are seven projects that are highlighted, so I'll just walk through a bit of detail on each one. So the first project would fund electrical infrastructure to support LED lighting in trees north of the Ernie Radburn Pavilion. The cost estimate here is $70,000. The second project would fund the installation of additional tree groves along 100th Street from 116th Avenue north to 139th Avenue. And in the report, you'll note there are two options for these tree groves. Option one features three larger tree groves and one small one, whereas option two splits things up a little bit and has multiple smaller groves along that full corridor. Cost estimate for each option is $150,000. Project three would fund improvements to the triangular median, that's between 99th Avenue and 100th Avenue, just west of Bear Creek. There are three options listed within the report. The first would resurface that space with asphalt for $125,000. The second option would convert that space to a vegetated bioswale for $60,000, and the third option would have seasonal planters installed within that space at a cost range between 20 and 40, depending on the type and density of planter. Project four would fund the installation of new park furniture across multiple neighborhoods for an estimate of $100,000, so this would focus on picnic table installations, benches, and bear-proof garbage bins. Project five would support the cleanup and improvement of the small parquet, which is at 100th Avenue and 100th Street. It would include the removal of the damaged planters that currently exist there. There is a note regarding a potential installation of picnic tables and garbage bins. I will mention that we are discussing various options and would pursue that with the Downtown Association. A cost estimate for the work is $35,000. Project six would fund the installation of an entrance sign along Highway 40 at the south boundary of the city. Cost estimate for this project is $140,000. And then finally, project seven would replace the existing wooden dock and fence at the Ernie Radburn Pavilion, both of which experienced recurring damage due to seasonal moisture. Cost estimate for this project is $160,000. A key risk with the projects, of course, is the 2025 timeline, so projects, while feasible in scope, may extend into 2026 just due to the procurement process and/or contractor availability. With regards to engagement, Environment Parks coordinated internally with departments such as corporate facility management and engineering and transportation to review the feasibility of those projects. So in summary, the projects reviewed are strong candidates for implementation to enhance the city's public spaces, advance beautification goals, and of course, support long-term community vibrancy. And with that, the recommendation today is that committee recommend council approve projects as selected.
All right. Thanks for your report. I have a full queue. I'm just thinking of the process for a second here. So we're going to go with questions for administration, and then I'm going to ask counselors to make a motion, depending on the project they're interested in, and we will debate those as per the motions. Then if a project doesn't get a motion, it doesn't get funding. So first, questions for administration on any of the projects as presented. Recognizing Council Plott.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton, and thanks, Case, for the report. I'm curious mostly on, really happy with a lot of the options in here. I guess it's cool that we could, these will have some big impact in the community if they were to go ahead. So for me, I want to talk about project number two, specifically in the tree grove installations. I'm just wondering, on 116th Street by West Point, about seven, eight years ago, we did a project like this, but it was just small tree saplings and smaller trees, and, you know, seven, eight years later, it looks really sharp to me. So I'm just wondering if this, if these two options are with fully baked out trees, we're putting in two, three-inch calipers, or is this just using smaller sapling-style trees for what was bid on this?
Through DeVries.
Through the mayor. So what was costed here is a bit of a combination, but it does focus on larger caliper trees, so a two-inch caliper and/or 180-centimeter-tall evergreen style. So that would be the focal point for the visual impact of the groves, but within the costing would be the installation of some smaller shrubs as well.
Okay, and I guess, I don't want to get too into this, but I am curious about, would you know approximate cost difference if we said, let's just go with all smaller trees versus the six, five, six, the bigger ones? Because I'm hearing those are getting up between $500 to $750 a tree spaded in now. So would you have an idea of, sorry, it's kind of on the fly, but would you have an idea if we were to say, let's just go with all smaller trees and shrubs? I guess the reason I'm asking is my appetite would have been, we could maybe do a lot more of them earlier, and yeah, they take a little bit longer to grow, but always have more appetite to get more trees in the community. So would you have an idea of what that would cost difference would be?
Through the mayor. So I don't necessarily have it broken out just for the total cost, so going from $150 down to, but you're absolutely right. Our larger caliper trees are in the range of 600 to 800 installed, whereas a smaller potted stock, as we call it, would be closer from 125 to 250. So there is potential to do a lot more with some smaller trees. One item to note is that the groves and the number of groves themselves would likely stay the same, and that's based on just assessing where they are positioned along the boulevard. We wouldn't necessarily go smaller and add more. We would probably keep it smaller in the same scope, if that makes sense.
That's fine. I was just, so it wouldn't be, it would be an optional to take your six-foot tree and put a two-foot tree there, and it's planned out to grow the same way, so we could, we could adjust if we wanted to on that?
Through Mayor Clayton, that is correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Recognizing Council Teason.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. DeVries. Really excited about all these projects, and I know there's only so much money, so we're probably going to have to pair at least one of these out. But since we're talking about trees, I actually have something for everything here. My question is for you is between option one and two, are those set in stone, or can council pick and choose? Like, I don't want to get into operations and stuff like that, but I saw some really good tree placements on one option, and then it wasn't there on the second option. One I'm talking about, I think, is 116th sort of corner there that was presented in option one, but not in option two. I also had a question in regards to, I know that council's direction was for the entrance of the city to be beautified and stuff like that. In option two, I noticed that there, and even in option one, there's a lot of west-side plantings for the tree groves rather than the east-side plantings where people would be coming into town on that, on that road. Can you explain why that is, and also is there an opportunity for council to, I don't know, get into the weeds, I guess, so to speak?
DeVries.
Through the mayor, I can confirm there will be no weeds in the tree groves, no. But I will say, I will say that a lot of the position of the groves and the reason we included those attachments, of course, it starts with a desktop exercise based on utilities, and so that really is the driving force behind where groves are positioned, especially along the major arterial roads. So if you're seeing more on one side versus the other, that's likely due to the availability of space within that, within the one boulevard versus the other.
Okay. Now, in regards to mix and matching, that weed comment maybe in the trees, is there potential, like, for council to say, well, we don't like this one south of 128th on the west side, but we do like that one on the corner of 116?
Through the mayor, I'm fairly flexible. I think the, you know, the bed sizes themselves are marked out based on, again, the utility constraints and concerns, so if there's an appetite to explore an adjustment or a mix to those beds, we can certainly look at that. But again, I would want to probably keep it within the scope that's been presented, just a matter of readjusting which ones, perhaps.
Okay, thank you.
Just going to quickly ask questions on the similar vein. And the reason that primarily all of the trees, as suggested, are on the north-south corridor is because that's through an assessment that was the most deficient, those were the highest areas of deficiencies, or, like, I'm just, like, there's nothing east to west on this, there's not, like, it's pretty much all in the same corridor, and I'm just curious why?
Yes, so Mayor Clayton, that's basically what this is, is an exercise of continuing on with the phased approach that we had for urban forest groves. So currently, we're working on installation of groves along 116th Ave, so this would continue that process north along 100th Street, which would have been our next scope.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks for that. Council O'Connor.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. When I look at the layout plan, I notice there's a, there in figure one, an attachment one, and but a Cedar Point, and I think that's there for a reason because of how large it is. And then when you go down to figure number three, I noticed that there's two on, again, the east side of the road, but none at the very first business that you see coming in is Windsor Ford, and it's the ugliest corner in all. And I'm just wondering, is this, is there an opportunity to move something to that corner so our presentation coming into the city is a lot better?
DeVries.
Yeah, through Mayor Clayton, again, the position of the groves currently within the attachments was based on that exercise of the utilities. So that said, none of this has been ground truth, so if there's opportunity to, or an interest to move potential locations, we could explore that. I think for us, the important part would be how much budget is available and where can we put those assets along this strip?
Yeah.
Again, it would have to come back through to the placement of utilities to be able to make a firm decision.
I'll be making a motion coming forward, then.
And just to be clear, I would assume because you have in option one, you have Cedar Point as a, as a large installation, but then you also have in front of Cedar Point the smaller option. If council were to have interest in approving both, you wouldn't recommend that we did both those, would you?
That's correct, Mayor Clayton. We would need some firm direction on which.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, good, thanks. Council Burke.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I just was going to throw one on the table rather than questions. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, I would like committee to recommend council approve project two, option two, which is the more groves, although I really like where Mayor Clayton was going with one big one in front of Cedar Point. But I like the idea of a lot more groves than fewer, but also what a concern of mine might be if we had the larger groves is blocking signage for business. So I'm just trying to find a balance where we can create lots of trees, but also not to the detriment of specific businesses that might be blinded by a future grove.
Okay, so that motion is in order. I'm just, I know there's a lot of you in the queue. I'll just ask to have faith that I'll get you back on your other questions. I'm just looking now for discussion and debate on the motion as presented. So that is to recommend project two, option two. Recognizing Council Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. You know, I'm not sure that I feel we have the necessary expertise at this horseshoe to determine where we should be putting those groves. I accept what Council Burke says, that he would rather have more smaller ones, so it looks more contiguous and people's business signs may not be blocked. But there's a lot more than just utility placement to determine whether or not a grove will be successful or unsuccessful, such as there's some really crummy patches of soil in there with some heavy clay and lots of salt, and some, some of those places may just not be viable to put a grove to start with. I am fully supportive of planting a million trees, but I'm not sure that we are the experts in where those trees should be placed, and I would be more comfortable if we simply indicated to our staff that we would like more smaller groves rather than we would like a grove here and here and here and here.
Well, I kind of think that's what this report does, though, right? I mean, the subject matter expert is suggesting you can do this option or this option based on their.
But he's basing it on a map, not on actually going and looking at site. That's my understanding.
Oh, Mr. DeVries.
Through Mayor Clayton, we have had staff go out and look at the sites. The part that's missing is ground truthing actual utility line locates. So the sites are confirmed based on a number of factors. Utility locates our utility position in our software is one. Not blocking the frontage of businesses is another, so you'll notice most, not all, but most are in front of a parking lot or parking space. For the grove installations themselves, the price would encompass not just the installation of the trees, but we would also add soil amendments, which we have done in the previous groves as well.
And I just have one other question. I know that the northwest, those northwest groves really face a lot of wind damage, which is why we're not able to grow single trees there. I'm thinking about Councilor Plott's recommendation or concern about whether we could plant more cheaper, smaller trees or bigger trees, and I'm wondering which of those two has the best wind resistance? Because I would, I would rather plant a wind-resistant tree than a cheaper tree, if that's the case.
Through Mayor Clayton, obviously, the larger the root ball, meaning the larger the tree, the more support or counterbalance that that asset would have against the, any wind. So larger tree would likely support itself better against wind. Small trees do sometimes succumb to wind, especially if the staking isn't as sufficient as maybe it could be or should be. So a larger tree would face that a little bit better.
And the groves are intended to have a variety of sizes of shrubs and trees in them, correct?
Through Mayor Clayton, that is correct.
Yeah.
Councilressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I don't know if I'll support this or not. I'm not likely to, as is. I've got a slight bias towards, I prefer the bigger, I prefer a few bigger groves instead of a higher number of smaller ones, because we'll get the, we'll get them everywhere eventually. When we put one in, I want to do it right the first time by making it as big as can fit, is my kind of bias, but what I very strongly feel is specifically with Cedar Point. With Cedar Point, I'm really disappointed that we, that the landscaping that we anticipated in that building hasn't panned out, and we haven't done that yet. And I think the very least we could do for the residents who are living there is give them the best possible screening from roadway and from the, from the mall. So for me, it's, I could live with smaller ones everywhere, except for at Cedar Point. I really want a large one at Cedar Point, so I don't know if I could support option two.
So, yeah, and I'm, I'm with you, Councilressi. I guess, I'm just thinking through here of a process. If you wanted to amend the current motion to exclude one site, we could do that, and then you could add a site. And I know then it's kind of a bit of a fly financially, so we won't have an exact number. I don't think council's planning to spend every penny today, so that would leave some flexibility. I did have one question before we continue on for Mr. Burke. This address is spending a lot of the money on the projects as listed, but there was some conversation around the committee table about potentially using some of the Community Enhancement Fund to support partially, if nothing else, the outdoor volleyball courts, and I wondered where that consideration was.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. We consider this a starting point. It wasn't a recommendation to do all of it. Council doesn't have to spend all of this money. If they don't, it would carry forward and continue in future years. As Chief Whiteway indicated, as we weren't bringing forward mid-year capital this year... As, as Chief Whiteway indicated, as we weren't bringing forward mid-year capital this year, it just wasn't fitting in this last year budget cycle, we did want council to have as much information as possible, all the things that they've been thinking about. And that's why the driving range and volleyball reports were brought today. Well, it's not, it's not currently included in the policy to spend on activities like that. Do you think it is in the spirit? And if council so chose, they could consider that a funding source for some of the other projects that our information came forward in separate reports today. So it wasn't necessarily a recommendation, but I did want to indicate that if you are looking for funding sources for other things, particularly considering that there's a larger amount than the 500 that was anticipated in the community enhancement, that there were some options and for you to consider that. If there are some tweaks here on some of these projects, we will bring this forward to council next week and we could confirm everything there, just to make sure that we had a good understanding and that be the, the kind of ratification. So happy to take some motions to start, as long as there was some just appreciation that, well, if there's any tweaks to it, we'll, we'll spend a week looking at that and bring it to council next week.
Counselor Tool?
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Just on Musco CP Park lighting, there's going to be some work being done around the dam structure, the reservoir?
Sorry, Counselor Tool, I hate to do this to you, but can we just keep the, I'll come back to you, I promise.
Hey, I'd like to see number one go in.
Okay, we'll come back to that, I promise. We're just going to take questions on Counselor Berg's motion currently. Thank you. I don't want your math right now, thank you. Counselor Plott?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. As there's a lot of, even though there, there's option one, option two, they're very similar options, there's kind of overlays in both of them. So I'm just wondering if admin, if administration, if we kept option two, but said on the 121st Ave, we want option one's trees, as Counselor Bressi's mentioned, to kind of screen in that Cedar Point facility? If we were okay with admin coming back and looking at potentially some smaller and larger trees in there? I'm just, I'm wondering if we'd still be on budget if we did the larger grove on that one with a combination of both? And I'm just, don't need to make that, I don't know if we need to formalize that, but is that part of what CEO Berg was saying, is if we said something like that, you'll come back and say, would it be within the budget?
It'll come back to council after they do some recalculations.
So on that, would you, would you need an amendment?
But I'd like his amendment yet to remove that one.
So I would just, or maybe I commit, Counselor Berg might want to do that on his own, maybe? I'm not sure, or would you?
Well, I do have math. So the, so the large groves are 50,000 each, the small groves are 30,000 each. So if we did four small groves and one large grove, we're at 170 instead of 150, and I would be happy to accept that amendment or change my, my motion.
And that's where, I guess where I was going, is I'd like to have your amendment with a large grove, but stay at the 150,000 and ask admin if they could make that work if you did some smaller trees.
So I think we're going to go with an amendment.
Okay, so I would amend Counselor Berg's motion to add the tree grove on 121st Ave as per option one, staying at the $150,000 and asking admin to come back with a report of if that's doable with some smaller trees within this project.
And I think administration will say it is doable. Basically, this motion will cap the expenditure at $150,000, keeping in mind that the project at in front of Cedar Point has intended to be larger trees. Mr. Berg?
Yeah, just, I mean, friendly amendment, just on the report part, I think the best way is for all these motions to go forward and we'll capture that in a list of, for council.
And it's committee recommend council, so, yeah, perfect.
Just want to make sure.
Okay, so I know there's a bunch of you in the queue, I will just see, I'm going to go, just give me a smaller nod. Counselor Teason on the amendment? Perfect.
Yeah, I wonder, I know it's an amendment and friendly amendments and all that stuff, but rather than, rather than have K-Score A and, and figure out small trees, large trees, I think we'll still capture the same amount of trees if, for instance, we went with a tree grove in option one and we removed figure four from option two, which has a small tree grove in front of Cedar Point and another small tree grove right across the street. If we combine those two tree groves, I'm willing to wager that could work within budget without having to send parks away to figure out size of trees and cost.
And figure four actually isn't in front of Cedar Point. It's in front of a hotel south of, and, do you know what I mean?
No, it, it looks like it's the
Nope.
Same parking lot?
Oh, no.
It's figure five, sorry, my bad.
Okay, yeah, so
Yeah, figure five.
You're saying removing figure five?
Yeah, if you remove figure five and put in, and kept figure one in for option one in front of Cedar Point, you'd still get the large tree grove, you just wouldn't have the small tree grove across the street. And then we wouldn't have to talk about the cost of trees and the size of trees that case is procuring.
Yeah, so I think, yeah, let's, that works, it's quite possible. But Counselor Plott's amendment is to come back with a maximum spend, recognizing that they want figure one where figure five is from option two.
Yeah, as long as Counselor Plott's fine with that, I think that would make it really easy for Mr. DeVries and Parks.
That was my understanding, but is that what you initially meant?
Overlaps.
So we're going to do option two, except on figure number five, it's going to be option one. Does that make sense, Mr. DeVries? Okay, is that what you hope to, and that's, works for you? Counselor O'Connor, is this on the amendment?
Yes, I would be, still, I'll come back to the point when you look at, okay, I got to look at the right thing. Attachment two, figure three, it shows two on the east side, small ones. I'd like to have one of those to the west side by 139th Avenue. And that way, we're not affecting the budget, but we're
The only thing I would suggest, without being a landscaper, that there isn't the space there.
Yeah, it's a lot wider than you'd think.
Well, it's privately owned.
Not the front on the
Okay, I'm going to go with administration's recommendation in this.
It's ugly.
Okay, thanks for your opinion. Counselor Blackmore?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. When I think about the groves that have done really well over years, the larger the grove, the healthier they are. So if you think about the grove in front of the old Northland Chrysler, that is a very healthy grove and it's the largest one probably in the city. However, the one in front of the old Windsor Ford is not a particularly healthy grove and it's quite small. So I will support the amendment, but then I will not support the motion as amended, because I think we need to build bigger groves, not smaller ones.
Okay. Counselor Berg on the amendment?
I would just as soon spend the 170 and get a big one and four small ones, but I can live with the amendment.
Okay. Counselor Teason on the amendment?
Just a question, if I may, for Mr. DeVries. Mr. DeVries, back in the day, 2014, when we were developing the edible landscaping policy, our Parks employee, Jim Donnelly, mentioned that the city had an inventory of all the soils mapped out across the city and that that would help to inform where plantings would better thrive in the areas that they are. We still have that inventory and is that part of your decision-making process?
Mr. DeVries?
Through Mayor Clayton, yes, we still have that soil inventory. That helps us decide and narrow down tree species based on the locations being examined.
Okay, and just speaking to the amendment, I won't support the amendment by Counselor O'Connor, if that's what we're amending on, or is it my amendment? Okay.
We're not amending an amendment.
Wade's amendment, all right, okay, never mind. I was going to speak against Counselor O'Connor, but I'll hold that for the
Love him anyways, we'll keep going. All right, I don't think Counselor Plott chooses to close on his amendment, so I'll call the question on the amendment. Okay, you take your time. And that, oh, me? Can you try again?
Oh, I vote in favor.
Counselor O'Connor in favor? And that carries unanimously. Now, back to the amended motion, the main motion as amended. Discussion or debate on the main motion as amended, which would see, just for clarification, if you were to look at option, attachment two, rather, it would see a bed north of 116th. So one on the corner there and one in front of, don't know the name of the hotel. It would see, it would see figure six, which would be two beds south of 128. It would see figure seven, which is two beds south of 132nd, and it would see figure eight south of 139th. In addition, it would see figure one from attachment one, if this motion is carried. Recognizing Counselor Bressi?
Great, thank you. Appreciate the motion, but I'm opposed. Let's not take half measures. Let's do a few every year and do them right, not do a bunch and not do them right.
Yeah, I agree. I, I, I mean, I won't support this motion because I do believe, for example, that figure four isn't necessary. I think that grove on the corner there is doing quite well, and I prefer to do the larger trees so we know they're successful and they make more impact, so. Counselor Berg to close on the motion as amended? Okay, so I'll call the question on the motion as amended. And that is defeated. I'm going to go to Counselor Blackmore, as she indicated she had a, something preferred.
I would move that we support option one, putting three large groves in, and one small grove as per attachment one. And I'm not committed to small grove either.
So option one, so that motion is in order, but just to clarify, option one would give a significant grove in front of Cedar Point, a little bit smaller of a grove south of 132nd, as in figure number two, and two groves south of 139th, as in figure three. So Counselor Blackmore's motion is in order, discussion or debate on that motion. Seeing none, I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. Next, I'll go to Counselor O'Toole, who had a question or a motion.
On the option of Musco CP Park lighting, can you give me a kind of your dream location of those lights? Where, where do you feel they're going to be going?
Through Mayor Clayton, the area that was looked at was just north of the Ernie Radburn Pavilion, so just north of the playgrounds that are there, some of the large trees that border the pathway that goes towards the outdoor pool area, so that sort of green space within there.
Was there any thought of going up the hill at all? Only reason I say that is when we had Bear Creek Folk Festival last year, I just overheard a number of people saying, it's too dark in here, I can't see. So I, just an idea, but I would support project one.
So Counselor O'Toole would like to put forward a motion that committee recommend council support project one, as in the presentation, correct?
And there would be options to add to that in the future?
Mr. DeVries?
Through Mayor Clayton, yeah, I believe so. This would just be specked out based on, it would all come down to the available capacity at the transformer.
And can I ask, you mentioned the location on the path that would go to the pool, rather than the path that actually go, on the main corridor path. Is there a reason for that location?
Through Mayor Clayton, either or. So the scope is for 12 to 15 larger trees, so wherever we see those trees within that area.
Okay, thanks. Counselor Plott?
Thanks, I'm just a little confused, I guess, maybe, so the, the lighting that we're going to do is going to go from Musco CP Pavilion to the pool?
It's the trees north of the playground. They start to cluster there, so you know how you come to the, the T junction at the bridge and the, and the playground there? And there's trees north of that playground. There's also trees on the other side of the path to the pool, but Mr. DeVries just said it's 12 to 15 trees and it could be on the main corridor if council doesn't prefer the path to the pool.
I guess I'm more curious about the cost, so we're basically going to spend about $4,000 or $5,000 per tree to light them up? That's kind of what the math is working out, too?
Mr. DeVries?
Yes, through Mayor Clayton, we did get a third-party firm to give us some costing. So obviously, the, the biggest piece with lighting in the trees is ensuring that the infrastructure itself can withstand any vandalism or theft. And so there's power to the receptacles that we need to be considered, controls for the receptacles as well, and then, of course, supply and connection of the LED lighting.
So I'm just curious, I mean, like the idea of lighting it up for safety and it's, and it's a beautiful, it's our jewel of the city, but I'm just also wondering, was there thought about just putting some cool street poles along the path? I just, I'm having a hard time with $5,000 a tree, just to light up a tree with LEDs, I guess.
And so maybe somebody can expand on the, I know that the exploration into this project was a, was, came to consideration because of the Spruce Grove skating lit area in their park, and I know many councillors have talked about this, the commercial lighting isn't traditional lights that you're hanging on your trees in your yard. This is commercial lighting that will stand winter, et cetera. Will it be removed in the summer? Tell us a little bit more about what you envision.
Yeah, so through Mayor Clayton, the, the lighting itself, this is specked out to be there year-round. So the lighting would require some adjustment. Our staff could do that adjustment each year, based on the fact that the trees will grow. But yes, that is correct, it would be a little bit beyond just, you know, standard lighting that you'd buy at a hardware store, which is contributing to part of the cost.
Okay, I just follow.
Yep.
I'm just curious, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'm just curious, what's the life expectancy of these, this lighting setup if we were to do that?
Through Mayor Clayton, you don't have a clear number, but I would say 10 to 15 years.
Thank you.
Counselor Blackmore?
Yeah, my, my question's really revolved around how do you keep people from stealing the wiring in the trees? Like, are they on 24 hours a day or, and?
Mr. DeVries?
Yeah, through Mayor Clayton, that is one strategy that we've, we've learned about, is to try and keep the power on to avoid potential vandalism with the actual infrastructure in the trees themselves. With regards to the, the receptacles and that, there's many different in-ground boxes that can be used to try and prevent vandalism.
And how much light do they throw off? I, I think as a city, we need to be aware of light pollution and try and minimize light pollution where we can. So how much light do we throw off? I know LEDs typically don't really throw off a lot of light, but I'm curious about that.
Through Mayor Clayton, I do not have a number, a lumen number at this time.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question in regards to that as well? Is this the type of lighting that can, can be programmed to change color or so that season, Halloween, we can have black and orange trees? Is it that type of lighting?
Yes, Mayor Clayton, that was the intent, yeah.
Counselor Teason?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Mr. DeVries, just a question in regards to how the lights will look. So there's been a mention of Spruce Grove, the first thing that popped in my head was the tree wraps around the downtown in Edmonton. Especially in the wintertime, you go and they got LED wrapped around all the street trees and it actually looks quite pretty. Is that sort of the design feature that, that we're trying to achieve here with the LED lighting?
Through Mayor Clayton, yes, it would be wrapping the trees, correct?
Perfect, yeah, thank you.
Counselor Bressi?
Great, yeah, for me, I love the idea of this. I know I've brought up the Spruce Grove Park in particular and I've, I've wanted us to do this with trees for a long time, so it kills me, but I'm going to be voting no against this motion. So I think that's the right spot for it. I don't think that's a place where in the winter, when we actually get, get dark, when people are still awake, it's not a place that people naturally gather and I don't think they're going to walk down there to enjoy those, enjoy those trees. If we're going to do something like this, I'd rather do it around the pond so people can enjoy it while they're skating, or maybe tie into the new electrical infrastructure bringing to Borset Hill and do this boggan hill, because people are bogging in there in the winter, or maybe do it in the trees south of the Musco CP parking lot, so you see them when you drive down to the park, or maybe do the Jubilee Park, so you can go up 100th Avenue. Just, I love the initiative, I just don't know if this is the place where our residents are really going to enjoy them and take them in, in the, in the winter months. It would be a, it might be an okay place for pictures, but even pictures, you got an ugly pavilion or ugly tennis courts behind you. So it's just, I love the initiative, just not a location that I personally support, so I'd love to not do this, but I hope we could get consideration of different locations in next year when we have this discussion.
Counselor Berg?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'm similar to Counselor Bressi, just in Edmonton on the weekend, and there's Enzio Ferroni Park in the downtown area, and very beautiful. The lights were amazing, and even though it was June 21st, they still had the lights on, it looked great. So I'm all for lights, but I think we have to place them where the city will appreciate them. And I do like the idea of having it around the skating pond, just to light that up. So that, that's my thoughts, is I love the idea, just maybe not shuffle the location 100 meters.
Counselor Plott, and then I'll jump in the queue.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I also, as much as I like this, I think it's nice to have for now, and just because they have the money, I don't think we need to necessarily spend it. So for me, I'd like to do a little bit more thought into where lighting would go. I appreciate the option, though, because now it's got me thinking about it a lot more. But I tend to agree with Counselor Bressi, I think if we're going to go down that path, maybe there is other options that we look at that would get more bang for our buck. And we have a lot of things under plate between potentially building more volleyball courts and other things, so I don't, I don't necessarily and other things. So I don't, I don't necessarily know if I want to see us spend all this money either. I do think we're going to have to allocate it to other things. So nice to have. Would like more information in the future, but not, not now.
A question, Mr. De Vries, a couple things, uh, based on council's feedback. Was there, um, is there flexibility in the location? And also, is there an opportunity for a phased-in approach if council wants to do a couple significant trees adjacent to the pond to to start, and then maybe it's enhanced as we go on each year? Um, is, is there possibilities? Were there other location considerations?
Yeah. Uh, Mayor Clayton, there is some flexibility. Obviously, this is building off of the, the transformer at Ernie Radburn Pavilion. Um, the calculations that the firm did with regards to the costs were based on those locations of the trees to the north. So equally, you could do the calculation to areas to the south or potentially to the west. The only difference would be, um, having to put in that infrastructure potentially near or through or under some of the hard infrastructure, hard surface that's there. Um, if, sorry.
If council came to you, or sorry, if there was a support for this initiative at half the price, could you come back to council with information saying it's going to be these six trees to start for this year?
Uh, yes, we could, we could look at that.
Okay. Counselor O'Connor, uh, sorry, rather, O'Toole, um, happy to go to you to close. Um, happy for you to, um, make a friendly amendment to your motion based on your colleagues' comments. Um, up to you. It's your motion.
Hey, um, well, I was thinking that, uh, this would be a start and then we could add over the years. Uh, I would take that friendly amendment to go to a specific number of trees to do them, if that's okay.
Yeah. So what I would suggest, rather, Counselor, uh, O'Toole, is maybe you withdraw this motion and maybe do an amended motion that, um, directs administration to bring back information, um, with a, with a set price, um, keeping in mind that this could, can, these conversations can continue, knowing that if information comes back later and all of the money isn't spent, that a discussion with further information could happen later. Mr. Berg?
I think what would be useful for Mr. De Vries is, uh, narrowing down the location. We can scale up or down, and we could bring a couple of options forward, but if there was consensus on a location, so is it, uh, the, the skating pond or some other location, then that would give us sufficient information to come back, uh, for a future decision.
So yeah, Counselor O'Toole, if you had a specific location and amount of money, maybe that's a great start.
Well, like I mentioned earlier, I'd like to see going up the hill. We got, uh, a lot of months where it's dark out and people are kind of laying up to, uh, Borsted Hill. And if it's not the nicest surface to walk on, it can lead to issues. Um, but I'm willing to back down and do the park, uh, do the pond.
So Mr. De Vries, in your exploration of this, do you know, is there a possibility of, um, lighting some of the trees that would be on the west side of the bridge going up the hill to the parking lot at the top of Borsted Hill?
Uh, Mayor Clayton, it definitely is different because we would have to cross the creek. And so at that point, we would probably be looking at the electrical infrastructure at the Borsted installation to see if there's an option from that.
So in time, when, uh, once the electrical installation is done. Um, so for now, that's not possible, Counselor O'Toole. So if you wanted to make a motion, um, first, I would suggest if you're interested, that you withdraw your existing motion, and then possibly you could make a motion with specifics in the area that is actually possible at this time, maybe with a set amount.
And that is the, not the, not the pond?
Around the pond works. Yeah, it's, it's.
I will withdraw my motion. Uh, and I will make another motion to install lighting around the pond. And what was the limit that we wanted to put?
The first project was 70,000, so pick up, yeah, pick a price.
I'll do $70,000 again, maximum at this time.
Okay, so now, um, Counselor O'Toole's motion identifies a location, uh, and identifies a cost. Happy to have discussion or debate on that motion, and we'll just give it a minute to get into the scrap. But go ahead, discussion or debate on Counselor's motion, motion. And Counselor Blackmore, you're still in the queue, I'm assuming that's.
Sorry.
That's all right. I see no one in the queue. Um, I like the idea of, um, lights around the pond. Um, I don't, what I don't know, Mr. De Vries, based on that location, if you actually know if there's enough large trees that you would spend that money?
Yeah, through Mayor Clayton, that's one thing that we'd have to look at in more detail. Uh, and then also ensuring that the lighting is sufficient so that it's not being, uh, washed by the floodlights that are there for the rink and skating itself.
Right. So, um, Counselor O'Toole.
Can we leave it in? And then once we get more information, we can change?
Mr. Berg, do you want to motion, if Counselor O'Toole was interested in making, um, learning more about this, would you suggest he makes a motion? Or can this one stay as a potential item with information coming back?
Uh, thanks, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I would suggest switching approved to, uh, bring back further information, and then that would allow us to, to do that. So the money then gets, we'll notionally allocate it without proceeding with it until we've had a, done some more exploratory work and also brought that information back to council.
That work for you, Counselor O'Toole?
So hold on the motion until we.
So nope, it'll be committee recommend, um, um, there we go, direct administration to bring back further information regarding lighting around the pond at Musca CP Park to a maximum of $70,000.
Works for me.
Okay, so discussion or debate on that. Seeing none, I'll call the question.
O'Connor in favor.
And that carries seven to one. I will look to my colleagues for any other questions of administration or projects. Recognizing Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move that, uh, council approve project three, beautification of the triangle median under option two, bioswale median. And, uh, going with a bioswale median option, uh, one, it's, it's cost-effective, two, it's environmentally friendly, three, it's going to help prevent contaminants from leaking down into the Bear Creek, which I think we're covering off a lot of bases there. I was also leaning towards the seasonal planters, but then when I realized that we have to pick them up every year and take them back, that's more operational cost and expense, which for me, I mean, it's probably not going to cost a lot, but it means we got workers doing something that they could otherwise do, and we could have nature do the work for us and, uh, help improve not only the landscape, uh, but also, uh, I guess, the, the storage of water, the filtration of it, and the protection of our environment.
Okay, so the motion is in order. Discussion or debate? Questions for administration on Counselor Thiessen's motion, recognizing Counselor Blackmore.
I am concerned about the quantity of salt that ends up on that triangle and whether or not it's actually feasible to come up with a vegetative bioswale that could manage the salt. Um, I feel that if we do something similar and it's successful within a couple of years, that is totally awesome, and I'd be 100% supportive. But my fear is we're going to be eight years down the road and still have the world's ugliest piece of pavement or entrance to the, to the park. And, uh, so, Mr. De Vries, do you, tell me your level of comfort in, um, coming up with material that will actually survive and look good?
Well, you already said there'd be no weeds in the tree grove, so I'm really interested to see this.
Well, I'm assuming that bioswale means actual weeds.
Mr. De Vries?
Uh, through Mayor Clayton, yes, it is, uh, the, one of the options here that, uh, there is some uncertainty around certainly with regards to its, uh, full success. Um, it is something that we are looking at because it is, uh, moving down the track of that low-impact development, looking for, um, where our infrastructure can do multiple jobs for us. Uh, and so filtering those pollutants before entering the creek is one of those jobs. Um, we do see that some other cities, major cities across North America are exploring this. Um, recent articles in CBC mentioning, uh, City of Boston moving in this direction with regards to, um, installing bioswales, uh, along boulevards. So, um, certainly the, uh, salt content is a concern. Uh, through this past winter, our landscape gardener did some trials with, um, different, uh, basically using the soil from our boulevards, uh, to try and grow different species, different, uh, salt tolerant species with some success. Um, we're also exploring the use of zeolite, which is a, a material that can help lock up some of that, uh, salinity. So we're exploring several different things that this would be an opportune site to, uh, execute a bioswale project. Um, it, uh, it certainly, I would not have the extreme confidence that there'd be full, um, uh, full success right off the bat, that it would take some time to sort of figure out exactly the, the best mix for, um, installing such a, um, vegetation, uh, option for the area.
No, I, I hate being the person that said, "You know, we tried this back in 1892 and it didn't work."
You're not that old, come on.
So I don't want to be that person that says we've tried, uh, vegetation in, in that patch before unsuccessfully. Um, would you be contemplating using some kind of salt deflector, like a shallow wall or something around it?
And that's my question. In the design, is it vegetation right up to the curb? Is it some, a concrete setback? I've seen biosways that have significant borders of concrete to keep the, the snow and the salt from seeping in?
Uh, yeah. So Mayor Clayton, there's several different options we could look at. Obviously, can go right up to the curb, but we could also, uh, leave space along the curb, um, and then do the vegetation in the middle section, um, which would allow for better success likely for that vegetation, um, especially the vegetation that gets the most salt, uh, impact. So that's likely an option that we would, we would look at with this install.
Counselor Plot.
Uh, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'm just curious on the seasonal planters. Um, in the report, it says that they're gonna, they'll just stay on site. Um, or am I missing that wrong? Their planters are removed, oh, sorry, they're removed each fall. So these would be similar to what we're doing out on Between Earls and, and I guess Wendy's right on 100 there that we've got those planters sitting out. It'd be something similar to that look?
Yeah, through Mayor Clayton, it would be, uh, yeah, somewhat similar to that.
I'm just curious, and I, I agree with Counselor Thiessen, that's going to have a cost. I'm just, I like the look of those, and I'm, I am concerned about the bioswale, and I would like to have something spruce set up. But what does it cost us annually through parks to actually do this? I mean, they gotta, they gotta storm, they gotta bring them out, they gotta set them up, and then they gotta take one in the fall. Is this a half-day exercise for a couple of people? Or like, what are we looking at for cost approximately to be able to do this annually moving forward versus a bioswale? If we, if we had that once it's in, what's the operating cost for both?
Uh, so I don't have the, through Mayor Clayton, don't have, uh, the exact breakdown of it. Um, I can say that with the, the barrels that are already installed, uh, it's a fairly swift process. We have them in storage. Um, one crew takes on the task of setting them out. Um, in that situation, there's a contribution from the DTA. They, they have a, a garden company that comes in and plants them. Uh, so similarly, again, and depending on, you'll see in option three, there's a range of costs, um, that speaks to the style and type of planter. So if it's smaller, um, composite planters, then obviously they're a lot easier to move, can be done quite quickly with, uh, no real need for significant equipment. Um, the top end of that range that you see is for the install of some larger precast concrete planters, which might take a bit longer to, to do the install. So unfortunately, I don't have the breakdown of the exact operating component to it, but in speaking internally, um, it is something that we could take on as a task.
So just for reference, from the lower price options, similar to the wood ones that are out on the street now, that kind of look?
Correct, through Mayor Clayton, that is correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Bressi.
Great. Um, so it sounds like if we do the bioswale, you're taking a bit of an experimental approach. Am I correct in assuming that some, if you find success there, it would also apply to things like along the bypass where you have that ugly gravel strip right up, up there? Would this be a experimental approach that might, um, your learnings might be applicable elsewhere in the city? Or would it really just be, you're just trying to figure out that one piece of land?
Through Mayor Clayton, I think it would be pretty restricted to that space. Um, the reason that it's suggested is certainly the proximity to the creek, and then its natural state as, um, sort of directional flow of water towards the creek. Um, whereas along, um, boulevards and, and like, what cities like Boston are doing is they're doing a lot of excavation to actually create a low point for that bioswale to be successful. So that would be a lot of extra, extra work on a standard boulevard.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Thiessen.
Uh, if there's no one else, is this to close or?
Sorry, I just thought maybe you had a question. Okay, Counselor Berg?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. So because there's no images of what a bioswale looks at, like, I, I did a Google search, and quite a few of them incorporate a lot of stones, even some large stone. Um, does your concept have stone? And if so, what would be a rough percentage of plants to stone?
Sure.
Yeah, through Mayor Clayton, um, yeah, so I should have included an image. Um, essentially, you would have a space back from the curb, the vegetation would start, and it would, uh, taper into what we would call a thouegg. And in that thouegg, which is where the water would be conveyed, uh, you would have stones like cobblestones sort of down the center of it.
Okay, so no accents or anything like that are planned in this?
Uh, not currently, no.
Counselor Thiessen to close.
Yeah, I really loved the discussion around this, and, uh, really hopeful that, uh, that this motion passes. Um, I think, uh, Mr. De Vries and our Parks Department know what might work. And, uh, we talked about stormwater management and utility modeling and stuff like that. One, one point I was really big on was bioremediation. And, and that's essentially planting trees, shrubs, and, and plants that help to absorb and, and take on that extra water and salts. I also did a quick Google search, as Counselor Berg did, but mainly on shrubs that, uh, that, uh, can handle salts that are native to the Grand Prairie. And there's quite a bit, like, even if we were to put along the bioswale, uh, beach rose, uh, shrubs, that could look really nice as well. And then maybe put other grasses in there to slow down the water and the salt. But, uh, it's highly salt and pollution tolerant just for that one shrub. But there's a variety of options here of which, uh, Parks team can choose from in designing this bioswale. And, uh, if it goes well, well, we can ensure hopefully that our, our Bear Creek will stay healthy and hopefully clean itself up without getting all the salt and sediments that, uh, find their way in there through a very busy road. And hopefully we'll improve the aesthetics, uh, as we enter into Grand Prairie. And, uh, we don't take away or create any impediments to that big, beautiful downtown sign that says city center for the city of Grand Prairie. So for all those reasons, I hope, uh, there's, at least for all the members of council can support this motion. Thank you.
Thanks for your close, Counselor Thiessen. Call the question. Counselor Plot votes in favor, and that carries unanimously. All right, Counsel, Counselor Plot. Recognizing Counselor Plot.
Uh, thanks, Mayor Clayton. Um, I just would like to get a little bit more information before I would, I'd like, I'm likely wanting to support the project five, but I'd just like a little bit more information on the, um, that area. And has there been a kind of a, a basic design scope or anything down on that? Or I know you mentioned you want to work with the DTA to figure that out. Is it more waiting till the DTA comes back? And this is kind of a place where our funding is to see what you guys could, would, would best fit, or?
Sorry, that's project five? Is that what you're referring to? Okay. Um, Mr. De Vries?
Yes, through Mayor Clayton. Um, right, so the damaged planters, uh, obviously the scope that's, uh, here would be to remove all that, uh, remove the planters themselves and, uh, repair and I guess resurface all the brick that would then be, need to be done, and then include the installation of some picnic tables and garbage bins. Um, we have talked, uh, with the DTA about the concept there, and there's some interest from the DTA to be involved in what that final piece looks like. A little bit of uncertainty around it being just picnic tables. And so, uh, we would take that money, um, and execute the cleanup and then work with them on what the end product might be.
And just to follow up, if I can, just curious on, do you have a cost of what the cleanup side of it is? Just, I'm kind of, when it all gets cleaned out and we get back, like, what's, what's the fun, new shiny part going to look like out of the 35,000? Is it mostly just remediating the site, or?
Through Mayor Clayton, I don't know the, the exact split, but the majority of that 35 is the, the cleanup of the site.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, um, I have no one else in the queue. There we go, Counselor Thiessen.
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Uh, just a question on the Musca CP Pavilion dock and fence. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we already do work not too long ago on the dock down at the Musca CP Pavilion?
Mr. De Vries?
Uh, through Mayor Clayton, not recently, aside from just normal operations of doing some repairs. Um, it might be familiar for council as it's been, uh, identified within the Parks capital plan. So it might, that might be ringing a few bells for some individuals, but, um, um, in terms of a, a full-scale rehab, that hasn't been completed yet.
Okay, and do we know what the, what the, I guess, uh, the assessment? Did we do an assessment on the dock? Is this an urgent, is this an urgent matter, I guess?
Uh, through Mayor Clayton, it's certainly becoming an eyesore in terms of the, the fence that you'll see along the, the pond itself. Uh, obviously, there's 10 by 10 posts that are deteriorating. Some are no longer even there. They hold the, the chain link that's there. Um, so it's a deteriorating asset with regards to the fence. Uh, the boards themselves, there's a lot of time that goes into replacing the boards. Often each spring, there's a couple of boards floating in the pond. So obviously trying to retrieve those, um, and ensure that the dock is, uh, is back up into shape for the many different user groups that, uh, that use it. Um, so I don't have any specific detailed assessment, though.
Okay. No, uh, in having answered those questions, I would move that, uh, we include the Musca CP Pavilion dock and fence, uh, into, I guess, uh, Parks, uh, operations for this year. Uh, speaking to this motion, uh, we're talking about lighting around the pond as well. Speaking to this motion, we're talking about lighting around the pond as well. I'd hate for us to say no to this and then five months down the road, say yes to the lighting. And then all the lighting does is point out all the pimples on the dock. So I'm hopeful that council will get behind this and support it as Musca CP Park. And that pond is the crown jewel of the center of our city. And I know hundreds of people that use that skating pond and love it every time the snow freezes it over. So yeah, looking forward to the discussion.
So that the that motion is in order. Recognizing Counselor Plot.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Appreciate the motion, Counselor Thiessen. I'm just curious on the, so this is a seasonal dock that would go in and out? Or this would stay permanent in the winter time?
Through Mayor Clayton, it's a permanent structure.
It's permanent. I'm, I really want to support this. I guess what I'm struggling with is I don't know what this looks like. I'm having a hard time conceptualizing and visualizing what this would look like. And so similar to almost the other, the other one with the lighting, like, I think for me, if I had a little bit more information, I could get behind this. But for 160,000, I think for me, I'd like to see some visual and some conceptuals on what this could actually be and and know a little bit more about life cycle, how much, how long this is going to last. If we do a composite, is this going to make 10 years later, we're going to be building another $660,000 dock? So want to support it, Counselor Thiessen, but I think for me, I would need more information at this point to want to support that big of a line item to, without, without more clarification.
Before I go to others in the queue, Mr. De Vries, do you have any context on some of the concerns Counselor Plot addressed? For example, the lifespan of the difference in the composite, different material in the composite, et cetera?
Yes, so Mayor Clayton, there's a composite portion of the dock at Crystal Lake, kind of is the down portion. So that would be similar material, similar design. So that material itself is 20, 25-year lifespan, which is something that we would want for an asset like that, so.
Okay, Counselor Burke.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. So, Mr. De Vries, around the fence, if I'm thinking correctly, there's 12 by 12 higher, posts, I guess, timbers that are in the ground. They're about two and a half feet high. Is that what you're referring to as the fence?
Yes, through Mayor Clayton, that's correct.
Okay, so I do feel that those are in desperate need of replacement because they are all rotted out. Today, though, I don't want to spend all of our money in one shot. So did you price out what just the fence might be versus the dock?
Through Mayor Clayton, no, we do not have that information.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Blackmore.
I note that this is unlikely to be completed in 2025. And so my preference would actually be to refer this to the full budget to look at some other issues that exist around the park, maybe including the tree lighting. But also, the sidewalk that leads down into the park is atrocious, and I challenge each of you to go walk it because it is in bad shape. I would just like this to see a more complete picture of some of the renovations that need to take place at Musca CP. And because it's not going to get completed this year anyway, I would just be happier to have it referred to budget. And I can make that motion.
Okay. Still already have a motion in the queue. So I have, I have a motion, but I will come back to you.
Okay.
Okay, Counselor O'Connor, on the motion by Counselor Thiessen to approve Project Seven.
Yes, I like the idea that upgrading and replacing the fence as what Counselor Burke brought up. I think if we're going to put lights there, we better make it look good. So, and the composite materials you're talking about, I think, are critical at having longevity.
Thanks for your comments. Counselor Blackmore, you still in the queue? Is that new?
Oh, sorry, no.
That's all right. Counselor Thiessen to close.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I actually debated sending this one to Budget Deliberations like Counselor Blackmore. But when I started thinking about the cost of everything and how fast they're going up nowadays, how transportation could go up when we're talking about world events and stuff like that. Whether or not the dock can be constructed, we can still alter the materials right now and probably get a better price point on them and not have to hopefully double the budget after budget on the fixes that this dock will require. So for those reasons and the reasons I mentioned before, I hope council can get behind this one for this year.
Call the question.
Plot in favor?
And that carries six to two. I'm going to maybe check with Ms. Whiteway. My running calculation is about $460,000, but I'm wondering if you happen to have a number just before I go to the others in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So I have $440,000. One remaining is 225.
Perfect, thank you. Recognizing Counselor O'Connor.
Yes, no one has mentioned the South Entrance sign. And I think with the increased traffic coming from the south, I think it's important we take a look at this project. And we've, it's been talked about, but nothing's been done with it. And I think, does this keep us within budget is my question?
It would.
Okay, then I will move that we do the South Entrance sign. And it will be unlikely for this year, but hopefully we'll support it and put it in next year's budget.
Motion is in order. Just a question for administration. Am I missing, or did you have a more specific location?
Through Mayor Clayton, there is no explicit location within here. We have consulted with Alberta Transportation, and obviously they have suggestions on a couple of locations that could work along that corridor space.
Can you give me a little bit more information than that?
Yeah, so there were five different sites that were looked at. Some of them were closer to 68th Ave. But the utilities get quite complex in that area. So they're more in the middle, not necessarily right at the county boundary, boundary.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I guess for me, I think this is another one of those nice-to-haves. I just don't know if I'd want to see it happen now. I still want to keep going back and keeping funding aside for some projects that I think are probably more relevant to the community at this point. So I'd love to see this happen at some point in time, but for me, at this point in time, I wouldn't be able to support this one. Thanks.
Counselor Thiessen.
Yeah, just a question for CEO in regards to this. I'm in line with what Counselor Plot's saying. But in the past, when we created the first two signs, I know that, Mr. Burke, you were, that was sort of your project, I believe, underneath your team. And my, my memory is serving me that the two signs were a lot more expensive than this one sign being proposed. So I guess my question is, was that like land acquisition and design included in that? Or is the signs just for what it is, 140K?
Mr. Burke?
Mr. De Vries might have the exact info. I wasn't here for the conclusion on that project, so.
Yeah, through Mayor Clayton, the pricing is a little bit more advantageous because we would copy the same design. So we'd be able to basically just purchase the sign that was used on both the north and west entrances. So the higher cost in those, in that situation might have been that design process that went along.
And would be of the lands that we're potentially looking at, I know you haven't nailed one down, but would, is there the possibility that we would have to do land acquisition for the sign?
Through Mayor Clayton, working with Alberta Transportation indicated that there's options within the right-of-way, so that would be permissible to do it, yeah.
Awesome, thank you.
Counselor Burke.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. Again, I want to see this at some point, just not now. As I'd mentioned, I really don't want to deplete this fund right down on our first spend because there are some projects going forward that might require a little bit more money. And since this fund is strictly now funded through surplus, which is not guaranteed, I just don't want to risk that we've got nothing going forward. So I'd like to leave a little bit of money in the piggy bank and and move forward with that, knowing that if something comes up, we do have that option.
So I'll go to Counselor O'Connor to close, and then I have a question for Mr. De Vries.
Yes, my concern is, as I sat on the committee to help get Highway 40 paved, and that was in 1993, 94. It took us a while to get it paved, and now we are 30-some years later, and we don't have a sign from the south part. And I'd be interested to ask administration how much traffic is now flowing through this part of the city. And so we're non-existent. We're covering on the west, and we're covered on the north, but we're not covered on the south. So I'm just wondering, I'd like you to support this because are we on the map or not?
All right, so I'll call the question on Counselor O'Connor's motion. And that is defeated. I had a question, Mr. De Vries, and I just, Counselor O'Connor, I appreciate it. I just don't think there's quite enough information there for me. I need to know land, et cetera. I had a question, though, Mr. De Vries. We were granted a significant amount of money through an FCM program that was for trees, and I'm curious where those trees are going.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, so there's 125,000 that have been, that has been submitted and being currently installed in tree replacement program. So there's 260 trees that are just about finished planting across the city.
Yeah, but we already have a $90,000 amount that we spent on tree replacements. So you're upping the tree replacement to 210 this year?
Through Mayor Clayton, it's 100,000 plus the 125, so it was 225 together.
225,000 is going to tree replacement. So would it be fair to speculate that next year you need less than 100,000 for tree replacement?
Yes, Mayor Clayton, we've had a very good year and previous years as well, and it's working through a lot of the replacements that have been required. We did have for several years a backlog where we would have to tell residents whether boulevard trees, they might be on a list for three to five years. We've seemed to work through a lot of that queue.
Perfect, good to know. Thank you. Counselor Bressi.
Well, great. I'm excited to hear. We're going to have some free money spent on new trees then next year because that's where I think we'll redirect that, I hope. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna change a recommendation in this report slightly in my motion. And that is that council approve up to $35,000 to support the cleanup and repair of the 100th Avenue 100th Street parklet. And just to speak to this, I don't really have a lot of appetite for adding more furniture, more improvement there. But we have spent a lot of money on downtown. It's embarrassing for me to see that broken planter. So I want, I want administration to have the money it takes to repair it. I don't really want to allocate money at this time to to improve it. But we're talking $35,000 total bill, and we heard most of that is the repairs. I don't think it's worth our time to say to administration, hey, come back and give us a full report on what you need just to clean. So I'm, I think just saying up to $35,000 to do that is the best way to go about this.
Counselor Burke.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. Thanks, Counselor Bressi, for bringing this up because I've been debating this in my mind. To me, quite simply, is if we brought it up to the standard of the rest of the downtown with one of those stone benches, and I'd be content with something like that and not going overboard, but just, again, consistent with the cityscape that we've already built. So hopefully that would fit within 35,000. But again, I don't think we need to go overboard on it. So I'll support it.
I too will support the motion, and based on the conversations that are subsequent to the motion, I think that that's important. I don't want to see picnic tables, additional features. It's really getting it to the standard of the existing streetscape. So adding, as mentioned, a, one of the rock-looking benches and the existing types of garbage can, but not really creating an additional space out of it, just bringing it up to standard of the other downtown. Counselor Bressi to close.
Well, and just to hear that, I was really specific that my motion was just for cleanup. I would do a friendly amendment and say, hey, just, and take out that for cleanup, that up to only, and I guess do it as recommended in this report, but with the hope that administration saw the discussion here, and we'll take that into account when it's figured out what's due and won't feel it needs to spend the full 35,000 if it doesn't need to.
Yep. All right, so I'm just kind of a minute for my. Yeah, I still, Counselor Bressi, do you still want the up to 35,000 in there?
I'll still do the up to 35,000. Yeah, sorry. That was, that was, that was my fault, not the according secretaries.
All right. Call the question.
Bressi in favor?
And that carries unanimously. Counselor Thiessen.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move, and I'm open to a split here, but I would like to move that we take Project Four and Project Six, New Park Furniture and South Entrance Sign, and refer them to Budget Deliberations. In speaking to this motion, this will give our administration time to come up with more information on the sign in the months going forward and as well as the park furniture. I do have questions about the park furniture, but I don't need to ask them today, right now. But if we choose to split and we get into discussion or debate, I can ask them then. But for now, I think we've done a good job with parks, and I think we can leave the rest for later and still have money in the bank.
Give me one moment here to get caught up. I will. Counselor Plot, is it on? Counselor Thiessen's motion, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'll support it going to budget, I guess, for me. I'd like to see, and just to signal to the venue, I don't know if I need to make separate motions, but I'd like to learn how we get more community involvement in benches in some of these things that we're doing. I mean, I live in O'Brien, I walk through these communities. I, I actually don't see a need for these ones, and maybe, maybe there's a couple of communities I haven't walked through, but I personally don't see a need. I watch our Parks Department walk by and clear out bags that have about two inches of debris and them all over the place because there's so many garbage cans all over the place. I feel like personally, I see a ton of benches in my area that I've never seen anybody sit on. So I'm struggling with wanting to do more of them, but what I, what I do find is I'd like to know how we do a better marketing job of like, why are corporations not buying these benches and these things from us? I've talked to a lot of people in the community that would like to do that. I personally try to do that. It's quite a process to try to do it with the city. So I'm wondering if there's a way administration can come back and talk to us about how do we get this out where the community is buying these sort of things? I don't think this has to be on the back of taxpayers. If they really think they're missing a bench somewhere, I think the community should buy that bench. We have design standards that we put in place when we build developments. We've got a lot of amenities, in my opinion, in those things. So it feels like to me, if we're going to add more, we're going above and beyond what we already put in our design standards, add even more benches and stuff. So don't mind I go into budget. I'm just wondering if administration can bring a little bit more information on how we'd even spend $100,000, I guess, to be honest, and then per unit, what we're looking at. And some sponsorship opportunities would be really great, in my opinion, on those ones. So happy to see you coming to budget. I'll support all of that.
Sorry, Counselor Bressi.
Great, thank you. Yeah, and sorry, Counselor Thiessen, I can't, I can't support this. I think that we're talking today about community enhancement funding, which was money that we funded through reserves, and it's money that we've set aside because it is some extra money to do something kind of nice and add some bells and whistles to the community. And I think it's different than our general taxation revenue, which is really what we're discussing when it comes to, it comes to budget deliberation. For me, I would be very happy to discuss these again next year if we have surplus and if we have money in this fund. I'm not really interested in discussing it in budget deliberations when we're making what I see as more core decisions. And so for that reason, I can't support your motion.
Well, I didn't think I had to close. I thought Counselor Bressi was itching to split and then debate one or the other. No, I'm okay with that. What I've heard around the table from many members of councils that they want to have some money left in the bank from, from this set of funds that are there. Our administration prepares our budget for us, and they prepare our funding sources for us. And I'm sure in light of this discussion and knowing that we still have money in the bank that can fund these projects if the council of the day after the election so chooses, this is just there for, for them, knowing that, hey, this is actual money that I think our CFO will probably points to, to say, if we want to do this project, then this is where we'll take the funding from. So it doesn't preclude anything. The reason why I put both of those into budget deliberations is because I'm not sure what the next council wants. And I'm also not sure about what our manpower can do this year. The report already states that we're likely not going to see either of these implemented until 2026. So I think it's very appropriate for us to be discussing the budget, and if that's the direction for community improvement that the next council wants to go. So that's why I forwarded these two to that, and I hope that council will support.
Bressi opposed.
And that carries five to three. With that, I see nothing further, or no one else in the queue. I'm going to I'm going to make a suggestion, as we are now 10 after 5, that we're going to move to item 4.7. And council will conclude the conversations on 4.4, 4.5, and 4.6 following tomorrow's Standing Committee. So yeah, but we're going to go to 4.7 first. Okay, yeah, thank you. So 4.7. Counselor O'Toole.
If you want, I'll make the motion. Let's
I'll come back to you. Let's go to 4.7 first. Excellent. Mr. Burke, is this your introduction? Thanks.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. When we passed the parade policy, we also identified that council wished to appoint a parade marshal. We do have a suggestion here in your Escribe, and in advance of the Canada Day Parade, we would recommend a motion endorsing Doug Eady to be the parade marshal for the 2025 Canada Day Parade.
Perfect, and the intent of the marshal is to, primarily role is to keep the pace of the parades, that we don't have the large gaps, correct?
That's correct, Mayor Clayton.
Thank you. Council O'Toole.
Yeah, and with that, it would be my pleasure to ask committee, recommend council appoint Doug Eady as the Canada Day Parade Marshal for 2025.
That motion is in order, and I'll recognize Counsel Teason.
I think I was just fighting to make that motion that Counsel O'Toole did, but I can't think of a better person to lead, lead the parade for us. And not, not only that, but he's probably one of the most recognizable, if not the most recognizable person in Grand Prairie right now. I think he rivals even the mayor as far as notoriety in this town.
Way more than me.
Yeah, he's, he's a pretty popular dude, he's a pretty good-hearted man, and he's at the heart of everything that's awesome in this community always. So also to mention that the Special Olympics are coming up and it'd be great to put one of our athletes right at the front of our parade for Canada Day.
100%, and for all those reasons, I support the motion. Seeing no one else in the queue, call the question. That carries unanimously. Counselor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I just make a motion that recesses the remaining items to our, after our standing committees tomorrow.
Perfect, that motion is in order. Get it in the Escribe. Okay, so it's under 4.7 if you're looking for it. All right, call the question.
Pressy in favor?
That carries unanimously. And with that, the meeting is adjourned. We'll see you tomorrow. Thank you.